It's seven o'clock, and I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting for January 23 at Town Hall. Tonight, I'll just briefly run through the agenda. I'm Travis Snell, Vice Chair, but I'm going to be Acting Chair tonight because the Chair, Kate Reed, is remote and had asked me to do this. So, given that, I'll just run through the agenda quickly. We're going to start with community input for items that are not on the agenda. Appointments and resignations. Then, we're going to be meeting with the Celebrations Committee or discussing that. Then, we'll discuss the continuance of a dog, a nuisance dog hearing. Vote to meet the early required, the required early voting in-person hours for the presidential primary. At 8:10, we'll do the regional study report for the MAPC. Then, the fire station renovation design discussion, the Cranberry Bog Dam Number One repair discussion, the municipal flag policy vote, and we'll get the TA report. We'll review minutes and warrants. And here are some liaison reports. We'll go over the cemetery deeds. And then, if there's any further community input at the end, we'll go over that, and then we'll adjourn. So, with that, I'd like, do we have to have a vote to open the meeting, or not? Or can we just, does the Chair buy it? Or do you have to?
You just start.
You just open. All right. Is there any community input from anyone at this point? Anyone online? All right. Seeing none, why don't we move on to the appointments and resignations? We'll start with employees. So, Judy Hodge, temporary municipal assistant. Ryan, do you want to talk about that?
Hi. Thank you, Travis. So Judy is going to temporarily work as a municipal assistant in the CONSCOM department. They need a little assistance right now. This is a budget-neutral move, 15 hours a week. Judy was serving as a temporary assistant in the Health Department, so she's just making her way around Town Hall. And we're glad to have her experienced, has some CONSCOM experience as well, so we think she'll make an impact there. And as you know, they have a lot of work to get done, so we're excited to have her start this week.
Do you want me to make a motion?
That'd be great.
Thanks. I move that the Select Board appoint Judy Hodge to the position of temporary municipal assistant effective January 22, 2024, pending successful salary negotiations and required hiring administration.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Kate? Oh. All right. Seeing none, and because we have a, I did forget to note, the people present, we have Travis Snell, we have Barney Arnold, David Modell is present here in the room, and then Kate Reed is virtual on Zoom, and Nathan Brown is absent tonight. So, let's do a roll call vote in order, please.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye. So, the motion passes. Committees and subcommittees.
Do you want me to put a motion out there? I move to approve the COAHS Strategic Plan Subcommittee charge as follows. Update the data and graphical information on the 2022-2023 strategic planning document. Assess accomplishments and plan for the future, pushing out the strategic plan by one year. This committee meets each year with the first meeting in October. The committee will bring its recommendations to the Director.
Great. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Kate?
Yes, I do have. I did talk to Town Council this morning about committees and subcommittees, and he recommended that we always put a term on, especially if it's a temporary committee, so that we know that we can take it off our roster at a certain point. Apparently, we have a lot of, I don't know, residual committees hanging around that were, you know, temporary committees that never got a temporary to enter about. So, I didn't understand. So, like, this one is just every year for one meeting?
They don't, yeah, they don't consider it temporary. They just consider it episodic.
I thought, this says each year with the first meeting in October, but they want to start meeting now, don't they?
They said they plan to meet monthly, by the way. I don't know where the once-a-year thing comes from.
Did they put forward the charge, or?
Yes.
Huh.
But doesn't, you have the, I see.
Yeah.
Needs each year with the first meeting. It's monthly. It's the first meeting of the year is what their, it's coincident with their first meeting, or it's in October, whatever. But they, they planned to, they told me, I went to the meeting this morning, they planned to meet monthly.
We can strike that sentence.
Maybe we just add that. Strike that sentence. Or the committee meets monthly.
I think it's clear as written.
What if we said, this committee meets monthly with the first meeting in October? That's, that would clarify it, right?
Yeah, that's probably better.
The committee meets monthly with the first meeting in October.
Intends to meet, intends to meet monthly.
Intends to.
I don't want to be too prescriptive, but they do consider it to be a regular part of their function at this point.
So, in response to Kate's suggestion, so, would we put a limit on this? Or this one, because they would want to do this every year, we just leave it as is?
Yeah, I think that's what they would like.
Okay. I guess maybe we need more guidance, too, about if it's a permanent committee, how do they know when they've reached form? Are they, they taking votes, who's voting members, who's not? Usually, subcommittees are something a little less, you know, they, I don't know, are they just bringing recommendations?
Yeah, it sounds like it says they'll bring its recommendations to the Director. And there are five people in the next motion, five people to be appointed to the subcommittee.
We can push it and ask for more clarity. I mean.
Well, we were supposed to, you know, discuss this two meetings ago.
I mean, they're going to put another one in front of us next month for nominating subcommittee.
Uh-huh. Maybe we could say something like, I don't know, on the, this charge one, subject to clarification about the voting members.
I'd rather, personally, I'd rather table, I think if we get this kind of confusion, we're not giving clear instructions about how to write a charge. That's on us, okay?
Yeah.
So, maybe we should be more prescriptive about what needs to be in the charge.
So, a lot of this is due to some of the open meeting law and things like that. So, we're going to have a blossom, I think, of subcommittees suddenly. And so, I think we do need to, I don't know if we need to hit pause, but we certainly do need to get some clarity about some of the issues that we're going to face and some of the requirements that we're going to.
Right. And I would like, actually, on that note, Kate, so I was talking to them this morning, as I said, and they told me, people in the committee told me, that the guidance they got from, I think, Ryan or maybe it was Aubrey, I don't remember, but they got guidance that this needs to be, you know, a subcommittee subject to OML. And I guess my question, but I have a question, just like for clarity, that we're, of course, an elected body, and anything we do, we already determined that we need to go OML if it's regular. But we appoint them, right? And if they convene people under them, they still, it's the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
If the creating body is subject to OML, so is the.
Okay. So, the flow down goes, goes as many layers as it takes down? Okay. All right.
Actually, according to Town Council, we don't even need to appoint, if it's a subcommittee, the parent committee is the one, and we're not the parent of this. COAHS is the parent.
Yeah.
So, they're the ones that should be appointed, unless we want, you know, to put some policy in that we don't want a whole bunch of subcommittees floating out there without our approval. But in certain respects, there's nothing in our bylaw that says that they have to come to us to appoint their subcommittees.
So, do you think we want to table this till next time?
I think, yeah. I think, well, right, so I think we, it sounds like we, now we got two different things. I mean, one thing, where it is determined that the charge needs to come to us, we should be more prescriptive about what we want in the charge. Where we don't have to, and then clear, to Kate's point, maybe there's some things, and they mentioned that with the next committee, which is not coming up tonight, but in the subsequent meeting, this nominating committee, I think Gretchen maybe told them that they just have to send her an email saying, we're setting up this committee. But, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I think we need to make more clarity, and we should push that, this going, this out of month is not going to matter to them, because the meeting's in October, right?
Okay. So, you want to just withdraw your motion?
I am happy to withdraw my motion.
Great.
I'm sorry to make so much trouble.
No, I think it's important to.
Well, yeah, it, yeah, just, maybe it's a good reminder to us, though, to sort of think about these things before they come to us, because this is the second time, you know, that they've asked us to take a look at this.
And who's going to handle this? Do we ask Ryan to come back with, or are you doing that, or some?
Or David is the liaison?
Well, it's a lot of, kinks in the chain. Ryan sees, you see Carol every day practically, right? So, and you're pretty knowledgeable about the rules. But we need to have a little session.
So, I don't think that there should be so many subcommittees, if I'm being, like, nominating should be done by the committee.
Well, that was a point, I agree with you, and I raised that point to them. I said, why don't you just, if you want to, you know, if Carol, for example, because they kind of go with her direction, periodically wants to ask some people as a spontaneous working group to help them gather some names, then they bring those names to the board, they don't take any action, they just pick names, just come back to your board with those names. Let the board decide, and then you come back to us. Like, why make it so complicated?
But, I know this isn't an, but that violates your, your policy. So, they should say, we have a vacancy, it should be broadly advertised, and then they should make a recommendation.
Well, then, that's true, too. That's true, too. Okay. So, yeah, all right.
And I'll just say, some of this with the COAHS is their effort to comply with the open meeting law and the discussion that Aubrey and I had with the Chair and a couple of other members, because they asked for clarification about the, the OML and application to the subcommittees, nominating committees, et cetera. So, they're trying to do what we asked them to do.
Well, if OML asks you, because if they used to send off two or three members to bring those things back to the committee, that was in violation of.
Right. Right. That's what I'm saying, but we aren't, right.
They said, we need to actually have a subcommittee. So, this is, they're trying to.
Trying to do it right.
I think.
Yeah.
And I don't think we should be getting in their way. If they want to delegate this purpose, which is, they're in their purview, because we delegated that to them, you know, certain things to them, and if any one of them delegates some of their work to certain members, or even to certain outside people, you know, because they don't feel they have bandwidth, that should be okay with us. And now, if they wanted to do a subcommittee that had absolutely nothing to do with what their job is, that would be a different story. But if it's in order to, you know, do their job, I don't see why we should stick our oar in. They should be in the.
All right.
I agree with that.
Well, there's more discussion, I think, merited, because I have a slightly different take on that, but we're not doing that tonight.
Yeah, why don't we put this.
You have a different take?
I do.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're going to table this anyway. Let's, let's maybe put it on as an agenda item for another time to discuss it on the next, add that to our long list of.
But just to, I just want to build on Kate's point, that if we're going to comply, there are going to be a lot of these, whether we agree or don't agree. But, so to your point, Ryan, about too many subcommittees, I think that ship has sailed. I mean, the OML is constraining us to, to a mechanism.
Yeah, I just think that you've tasked the Council on Aging to provide you with recommendations.
This one might not be the right.
They should just do all this work and bring it to you.
As part of their regular.
Part of their regular meetings.
Rather than having a subgroup.
The problem is, it requires staffing, minute posting, and it's a lot of employee hours for, for a lot of bureaucracy.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
All right. Let's, let's talk about it another time. We've got people in the room who are interested in, in wait, and are patiently waiting, but we'll keep going through, because I do want to get through these appointments and resignations. So, do you mind?
Do you want me to continue?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to take them one at a time?
I'd like to do them in batches, so like, for the, the different things for the, I think, unless anyone else wants to do them individually, I don't think there's, it doesn't seem like there's contention, or there's no contested spots, so.
All right. I'm fine with that.
Discussions about it.
Comfortable with that, David? And Kate?
Okay.
All right. So, why don't I just take the first five. I move to appoint William Luther, 107 Pheasant Hill Lane, to the Affordable Housing Trust with a term to end June 30, 2025. I also move to appoint Bill Rizzo, 155 Wolf Rock Road, as a Municipal Facilities Committee Representative to the Police Station Building Renovation Committee, term to end with the completion of the project. I move to appoint Jerry Lerman, 218 Stern Street, as a Municipal Facilities Committee Representative to the Police Station Building Renovation Committee, term to end with the completion of the project. I move to appoint Dave Betcher, 60 Ledways, 60 Ledways, to the Police Station Building Renovation Committee, term to end with the completion of the project. And I move to appoint Alan Lewis, 282 East Writing Drive, to the Police Station Building Renovation Committee, term to end with the completion of the project. I might as well finish up.
One more, one more.
Yeah. I move to appoint Suzanne Spinney, 270 Fisk Street, to the Police Station Building Renovation Committee, with a term to end with the completion of the project.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on any of these appointments?
I just appreciate people's willingness to serve.
Yeah, it's good.
It's great. It's great. All right. With that, they'll take a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Your mic's off.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye. Motion carries.
Do we have to vote on the, accepting the resignation? We decided we.
You are notified.
We're notified. Okay.
You want to note it?
I, and I'm, I note that we have received formal notification of the resignation of Phil Gibson from the Recreation Commission. Thank you, Phil. I move to appoint Meredith Bielecki, 45 Ember Lane, to the Recreation Commission with a term to end June 30, 2024. And I move to appoint Adam Cotton, 351 Baldwin Road, to the Recreation Commission with a term to end June 30, 2025. I move to appoint Jerry Boucher.
Actually.
You want me to stop there? Okay.
Yeah, well, let's stop and do the RecCom.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye. Okay. Regarding the Town Meeting Study Committee, I think we're going to hold off on that, is that right?
Yes, the moderator asked for us to get more names for consideration, so that'll come back.
I reached out, and I think I have two new-to-town, newer-to-town people who might be interested, so.
Good.
Working on that, too. Then, let's go to the last one. Isn't there a transfer station action?
Yeah. I move to appoint Benjamin Sherry, 8 Nathan Lane, to the Transfer Station Action Committee with a term to end June 30, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
You're on mute, Kate.
So, Reed, aye. People are forgetting to sit the.
Okay. Snell, aye. Okay, it passes unanimously. All right. On to the meeting with the Celebrations Committee. If you'd like to, please come forward and introduce yourselves and.
One way back. I'm Scott Evans. I am the Chair for the Celebrations Committee.
Chris Eisenby is a member.
I did send out some material in advance. I thought it might be helpful if you had an opportunity to glance at it. There were two documents that I sent out. One was a draft of the charge for the Subcommittee. I'm sure Kate will be thrilled to know the Subcommittee. And I also sent a, this graph here to give you an idea of what the events look like right now for 2025. And I'll, I'll be speaking to this in a few minutes. I thought it might be helpful to provide a little bit of context, maybe five minutes worth, for people new to the area, or people that may be listening here, that, as we all know, Patriots' Day, April 19, 1775, start of the American Revolution, the shot heard around the world, is celebrated, of course, annually. And every 25 years, there's extra emphasis on the celebration, expanded events, et cetera. And this has been going back to the, probably the late 1800s, that there's been this emphasis. But obviously, for this group, and this board, the of note are really the 200th, which was in 1775, and the 2000s. Those two had expanded events in Concord, and there was a lot of planning around both of those celebrations. 2000, I participated as a Minuteman, so I was part of all of the reenactments in the, in the battles and all of the rest of the events. That one pretty much took the same format that the annual ones do, which is, there's a lot of battle reenactments on the weekend, and then on Patriots' Day, which is always on the Monday, there's a parade or parades. And then on the 19th, whichever day that falls on, there's the Don Salute and other ceremonies, et cetera. So, 2000, from an organizational standpoint, was expanded quite a bit, and there were many more visitors coming to the area, but it wasn't anywhere near what it was in '75. So, I went back and I looked in the mosquito to say, well, what was going on in '99 and 2000, other than Y2K? Were we trying to prepare for the celebrations in, in the Concord Lexington area? And there really was very little mention that was extraordinary. Now, you go back to 1975, 70, and so '74 and '75, Concord started about five years before that celebration. And, and of note, historically, most of the towns formed their Minuteman, reformed their Minuteman companies in the '60s in preparation for this big celebration. But Concord started their planning about five years in advance. In Carlisle, I think it was a little over two or so. And it was extensive planning. They had intent, they were expecting 120,000 visitors to Concord. So happens, it was on Saturday, April 19, in that year also, same as 2025. So, there was 120,000 visitors expected, there were 3,000 scouts expected to walk through town, marching from Chelmsford and from Westford through the town of Carlisle. Concord was expecting that they would have to park over 14,000 vehicles outside of the town of Concord, because of all the visitors, after they used up the Concord space. And they were shutting the roads down to all egresses into Concord the night before and during the day. And there were all sorts of other, of course, preparations around fire and safety, and of course, President Ford arrived, et cetera. It was a, it was a big event. Now, I was asked to join the Concord 250th Committee as a coordinator for militia and Minuteman, so I'm on, I started this summer with that. And so, I've got some idea of what the planning looks like in Concord. And they have many, many subcommittees under the 250th Commission, and they have a tri-town commission that coordinates with Lincoln, Lexington, Arlington. That's obviously where the bulk of the events are going to be. I checked with surrounding towns. I said, well, what other budding towns or nearby towns also have 250 committees? And when I looked and I checked, Lincoln has one, Acton has one, Barackin, no, Bedford, no, Subbury, no, and Westford, no, but Arlington and Lexington also have 250 committees. I don't know whether some of these other towns intend to put together a 250 committee, but it seems that in Carlisle, where I don't expect to have the same scope and breadth of events that there in Crowes, that they have to deal with in Concord, but it seems to me that now's the time to get started. There's not that much time before some of the events will kick off later this fall of this year, and then, of course, in the springtime, when they ramp up. So, under the Celebrations Committee, thinking about that this was coming up, we formed sort of an ad hoc committee to try to get some things started, right? And one of them was, we submitted a application of CPA funds, so that we could hit this, this next meeting. And so, there would be some funds available for some things that we anticipate are going to be needed over the next year and a half. And we took that step, and we also then reached out to other interests in town that have typically participated in the past, the school, library, fire, police, obviously, the Historical Society, and others, just to get a sense whether we have support there, but have not done anything officially. And then we said, okay, now it's time to go before the board and say, hey, we, recommending that we think that we should form a committee to manage and plan and help execute these celebrations for the 250th anniversary. So, we drafted a, a charge, which I provided here, leveraged much of what was Concord's charge here. It seemed like a good place to start. Should I read this? To make.
The whole thing? No, I don't think so.
Okay.
But this whole thing, this would, this would be the charge?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. In essence, it says, all right, so the term would be immediate through December of 2026. That takes us to the, through the Declaration of Independence celebrations in July of 26. And we would have an inclusive Subcommittee that would include the, at least three members of the Celebrations Committee, at least one or more from the Historical Society, at least the library, obviously, the Minutemen, scouts, and other community groups. I expect that this may expand in that I believe the fire and safety groups have already been, like Brian Sarrows has already been, I think, contacted by Concord. So, there's going to be some sort of planning, and I imagine they're going to shut the roads down like they did before. Back in 1975, I mean, the whole town pitched in. Every single department had work to do, and they worked for, I don't know, 36 hours during the events. There was, National Guard came in, there were like 60 of them in, and we were feeding them, and so there was a lot of infrastructure that was part of that. And I expect we're going to have a very similar event here with Concord, especially they're extending it to whoever the next president is and all the dignitaries. So, it could, it's likely to be a super-secure event, you know, with the federal government, et cetera.
Scott?
Yes.
So, two questions for you. One is, did the projected numbers, 120,000 or whatever, did that turn out to be true in '75?
The estimates were, yes, about, they said between 100 to 110,000.
And most people are going to be focused on Concord. So, our role is supporting? Is that basically it? We're not, are we?
Well, so, so there's two pieces here. I've, this charge is basically saying, we're, we're recommending how we celebrate in Carlisle and what we do. We're not, and we will coordinate, it says, with the surrounding towns, but we're not planning at this point to say that we're going to do the planning of safety and traffic control, et cetera, at this point. This is more about, what does Carlisle want to do to celebrate? What kind of commemorations do we want to do?
But you made reference to the '75 effort that, sounds like the town, maybe it's a Brian question, the town was pretty busy in supporting the mass influx to Concord, right? The road control, the feeding of people.
I expect it to be the same here, but I think it will evolve, right? And whether they're part of this Subcommittee, or whether that's, they're separate in report to the board, and we just coordinate, I think we'll, we'll have to figure that out as we go.
I mean, there's a town-to-town component, right? Where you got to figure that out.
There is. There is. And my understanding is there's, they've already reached out to Carlisle, but I don't know how extensively. Now, because I'm involved in the Concord, I will make sure that at least through our, through our Subcommittee, we'll at least communicate what's going on and help to inform the board and the town, right? So, we can plan appropriately.
Right, thank you.
But I think Concord will take the right measures.
But at least preliminarily, you're, the Celebrations Committee in your ad hoc discussions, you're thinking you want to have some Carlisle-based events or activities of some sort.
No question.
Yeah. Okay.
No question. There were probably a dozen back in '75, including Wilkins had a new history book was released, there was the historic map of Carlisle with all the granite markers, and the markers on the house, and so there were a lot of his, history-based around the American Revolution events that took place. And so, we're thinking the same sort of thing, right? We'll involve, we'll get the school involved, it's in other groups. I think our charter is to educate the town about our history, its connection with the American Revolution, not just about April 19th, but about events leading up to it and afterwards, and what was happening in this area, et cetera, so that they can appreciate and enjoy some of the events that we would plan. And we'll come back to the board with suggestions once we get more input from the subcommittee, assuming that you guys approve and we put the subcommittee together, we'll come back with some planned events.
Scott, I, this is really helpful, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I actually, we have a dog hearing that is scheduled for 7:30 that was, that is posted that I have to do at 7:30. So if there's more that you'd like us to come back to, we can just table this for now, and our dog hearing shouldn't last very long.
Come back later tonight.
Come back later tonight. If you want to wait, and we'll get back to you if you're more.
Unless you have questions, I don't think it's necessary. The objective here was, A, does the board want to form a commission for the 250th? And shall we form it as a subcommittee under the celebrations committee?
Okay.
Maybe we can discuss that after the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott. I think this, you know, is definitely something that we should be doing, and it's great that the celebrations committee is initiating it.
Sorry to cut you short, though, but we did have this other, that's a timestamped thing that we have to deal with.
No problem.
Okay. So, but we can come back to this if anyone would like, because we probably, we may have some.
A few minutes, we should deliberate a little bit.
We can.
Well, because it sounds like there are two things you're looking for, and so we.
Right. So if you want to stick around for literally 10 minutes, it shouldn't take too long, I don't think.
Yeah, I can stick around for a minute.
All right, thank you. So with that, I would like to move on to our continued nuisance dog hearing for 40 Laurelwood Road. It's 7:30 PM. We had scheduled that for 7:30. Ryan, can you give us any update on that?
I can. So the board asked for monitoring of complaints related to this issue. In preparation for this continued hearing, we reached out to the neighbors, the complainants through the dog officer. They reported that they were pleased and relieved that there have been no incidents since. And I also checked with the chief of police and the police department, also there have been no incidents or calls related. So it sounds like whatever measures have been put in place have worked. So at this point, we're recommending to the board that you either close the hearing or continue it for one more month, like you did last time, to monitor the situation.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Because it's been how long? Has it been a month? Is that what this represents? Yeah.
It's been over.
I would give it one more. Because I think it was amazing how, you know, how magically, you know, it helped the last time. So just to be sure that the magic is, you know, I'm sorry, totally effective, I'd like to just continue it for one month, and then we can.
I think this is great news, also that it's been so effective. I don't know if you, the dog owner, do we, is there a reason to have him say anything?
It's up to you.
Well, I think if someone's here and they're willing to speak, I'd be certainly willing to, if you want to, please come up and introduce yourself again, and state your street and your name and street address.
Hi.
It just works.
It's on, yeah.
Oh, no, I had that one muted because it was scratching.
Oh, you want to move over to the other one?
All right.
Great.
Sorry.
Please introduce yourself again.
Hi.
Hi.
So Claudia Sina from 40 Laurelwood Drive. Yeah, I mean, I'm very happy that there's been feedback. I've been in touch with Ms. Green that was here previously in the last meeting. No calls, no messages, nothing. She actually called me by accident once, and then I called her back, and she's like, that was by mistake, everything's fine, no noise here, and she was fine. So as far as I'm aware, it's everything okay. I just wanted to ask if you'll continue this for another 30 days, if I'll have to be here next meeting, or if I'm okay not to come, or do I have to be here just so?
If we decide to continue it, I don't think you need to be here unless there is some kind of contention, and then it would probably be advisable that you're here.
Yeah. Judging from Ms. Green not calling me or texting me, I also felt that, you know, everything else was fine. So if I don't receive any calls or messages for her in the next 30 days, then I won't come for any reason, okay?
And are you finding that the dog collars are what, are making the difference?
Definitely. So we just managed to find one that actually works. We tried multiple ones of like noises and some different ways to approach barking, to try and be less harmful to the dogs as possible, and now we just found out it works. So they basically bark once, and then they get this noise sent over to them, and then they learn it. And German Shepherds are actually very intelligent, so didn't take them very long.
Good.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Sina.
Thank you.
Kate, you'd suggested extending this another 30 days, just to ensure that, is that right?
You know, belt along with the suspenders, you know.
So why don't I, I'll make a motion that we continue to have the hearing open for another 30 days to support the continuation of no more dog nuisance.
There's a motion in the packet. The second motion would be the.
One in parentheses? I mean, yeah, in parentheses?
And I would recommend.
To continue? Okay.
February 27th at 7:15.
Ah, okay. So I, so let me withdraw the first thing I said, and I moved to continue the nuisance dog order violation hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, and Section 14.6.5.1 of the general bylaws to, give me the date again, please, Ryan?
February 27th at 7:15.
February 27th, 2024, at 7:15.
15:00 PM.
Great. Okay. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'd take a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Me, aye.
Snell, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad it's working out.
Me, too.
Me, too.
Okay, so if the.
Scott, come on back.
Yeah, please come back.
Come on down.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
So the two things you'd like from us tonight are, one, confirmation that we support setting up a subcommittee, and the second was.
Well, actually, I said, setting up a committee, it doesn't have to be a subcommittee. Other towns, some of them do subcommittee, some of them are an independent committee, depending on how broad, you know, the tasks are. But in this case, given the scope, I think that a subcommittee under the celebrations is appropriate.
Okay. And what was the second request? You said there were two things tonight?
Well, one was form a committee, and the second was that it would be a subcommittee under the celebrations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it's not, maybe it's not two questions, okay.
Well, I'm comfortable with the celebrations committee forming a subcommittee, and this charge looks fine to me.
This charge says the board will approve the subcommittee members.
The members, right.
Yeah. And I think that's appropriate because we want to make sure we represent the town appropriately, right? Et cetera, and this is really a town-wide.
Yeah. Well, as long, are we, are you, will you be spearheading this and reaching out to the various people that you think would be representative?
Yes, yes.
Looking to us to do that?
No, 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 no. That's why I think it belongs under the celebrations committee, because we will drive the whole thing, right?
Yeah, which is.
We've already started the initial reach out. We'll expand it, we'll advertise in the paper, we'll get public input, et cetera. The first thing is to make sure that we have good representation of the town, anybody that's interested. So like this has, it suggests several people at large, they don't have to be part of any particular board or committee. And then we will, then we'll start the planning process, and we'll bring those ideas to the board, right? I think we should, on a cadence of once a month, we should report to the board, say, here's what's going on, here's what's being planned, so that you've got some idea of the scope and the types of things that we're planning.
Yeah, I've got just two quick comments. One is, that might be a good thing to have, go to the town administrator, so it can be in his town administrator's report, rather than necessarily somebody from the subcommittee having to be here and having to have a specific agenda item, if that makes sense to other people. And maybe, you know, halfway through the process, when you have a sort of a full, a pretty full idea of what you want to do, we could do a more, we could do a real discussion at the select board about it.
I would expect that things will be pretty quiet for a while, right? And then it'll ramp up in the fall, and then certainly right after the first of the year, then there'll be a lot of press about it, and there'll be a lot of, that's when the planning will get really serious at that point, I think. And I'm hoping that the town will have enough input there, that they'll know what the cost impact will be for, you know, fire and safety and other infrastructure pieces that I'm sure will be required by the town in order to manage the traffic flow and the influx of visitors.
Yeah, that was the other thing I was just going to mention, is that I think there does need to be some discussion and thinking about the cost. And, you know, I'm on the CPC committee, the CPA committee, so, you know, we received the application that you submitted, but I think we should talk about, the CPC can reach out to you separately about that application.
Uh huh, correct.
But I think we should make sure we're, we understand the resources that you would like to support the subcommittee planning, as well as then the things you're raising about looking at long-term, what's the cost going to be to the town to provide the.
Yeah, that's why I said we're focused right now on what are the events in town and the infrastructure to support town events, not talking about handling the influx of visitors and traffic and all the rest of that. That should be part of the larger discussion with Concord, and I imagine they'll, it'll have its own, they'll have to come up with their own budget. Now, we'll help with the communication, but it seems like those departments should probably report directly to the board about those plans.
It sounds like at this point, you're not looking for funding.
I'm not looking for funding. I think if the CPA is approved, we have things there that are historic in nature that would fall under CPA. We're not expecting that we're going to take on a number of events that are going to be expensive to the town, that should be self-funded in many, in many ways. For instance, I think a historic event might be maybe a colonial fair for a weekend, which might need some fire and safety, et cetera, but that would be a way where, you know, the public could enjoy reenactments and the historical society, and there could be a self-tour around to the colonial homes in town with, you know, this is what happened, and here's who lived there, and this is, you know, sort of give, make it sort of a day. But that would be probably the largest expense for a single event. We're going to do a trail walk medal, and I think we've already decided on that. There'll be some upfront cost for that, but if we decide to charge for them, we probably can self-fund. So there's a number of avenues that we, that we can take here. We're not expecting any major expenses here.
Great. All right, I think we've heard a lot.
I have one question. So I just have a question about the size of the subcommittee. So you, you have three, you want to be three out of the celebrations, and then at least five additional, but you list like about seven or eight possibilities. So what, what's a good size in your mind to be workable with that? You know, not unwieldy, but I guess enough volunteers to get stuff done.
I would say 10.
10, okay. So three of you guys, how many are on your committee?
We have five in the committee. All have said that they would contribute.
Okay, but you'd put three of them as.
I said, if it's going to be a subcommittee under the celebrations committee, we really need to have three people that are involved enough with the other seven, eight, or nine people, right?
Three, four, five.
That was my thought process.
You do have to be careful when you have 10 people, you need six for court, so, you know, the more people you have sometimes, the harder it is to schedule your meetings and get them posted.
That is correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you need to remember that.
Yep.
I just wanted to say one other thing is, I hope that when you, you know, if you look at the seal behind the select board, there's three dates on there.
Yep.
1775, 1780, and 1805. And I would really love to see you really emphasize that bracketed, those 70, 74 to 80, you know, when we really weren't Carlisle, we were part of Concord.
Is it our deal?
And how that all, you know, filters in, so that it, you know, it really becomes more, you know, you know, a Concord, rather a Carlisle, you know, celebration and celebrate our.
So our focus will be, will be Carlisle, right? So for instance, here's, here's one idea that we had, which would go, would we have a monthly piece in the mosquito that would be, here's what was happening leading up, starting maybe this summer, monthly, what was happening leading up to the American Revolution, what was happening in Carlisle, what was happening in the regional area, and bring as much Carlisle history into the storyline as possible. Really want to connect our town, including some clarity around, well, we were a district of Concord at the time, and we were made up of several towns, so, you know, a lot of people know that sort of anecdotally, but not a lot of detail about it. So we would, we would flush that out for them.
Yeah, that would be very nice. Yeah, thanks.
I thought you were, I thought you were volunteering to be on the subcommittee there, Kate.
Sounds like it.
What are those three, I know, I see them, but what are they?
We will be taking input from the public, like those types of comments, Kate, which is to make sure that we are including the kinds of ideas that people think would be of interest to the town or interest to themselves.
All right, David raises.
There's nobody in town that knows what those three dates represent.
Well, that's what David asked.
Assume you do, Kate, so why don't you tell us?
Nope, not, nope.
Not going to tell us? You're going to make us do the research?
Yes, I'm going to make you do the research.
All right, we'll do the research.
You have to wait for the story.
So, but back to the quorum, I think Kate brings up a good point. Would you consider nine makes five a quorum? It drops your quorum requirements by one. I'm just thinking about how easily you're going to be able to get everybody together.
Yeah, nine's, yeah, that works. I'm not expecting, based on my experience out of Concord, I'm not expecting I'm going to have a problem getting people together.
So what do you guys want to do? I don't care. Do whatever.
I'd let them decide.
Let them decide.
I'd let them decide.
In the charter, we have to put, like, we would vote the charter, and then they have to go find people.
They say at least, at least three from the celebration.
No, but they don't list a total number. Do we need to specify a total number? We don't.
I don't think.
The point was, we didn't, I didn't want to have to turn people, somebody away, that, right? I want to be inclusive.
So it's just as is. Do we vote it today, or wait, Pete, what do we do? Vote it, right?
Well, the only other thing would be if there was anybody here who wanted to offer any community input on this. This is the first time we've seen this, so it's not as though we've had, it wasn't in our packet. We haven't really.
It wasn't in the packet.
If you want to introduce yourself, you'd have to come forward to the microphone so people can hear you, please. And it is, thanks, Scott, for, but please introduce yourself, your name and street address.
Hi, I'm Donna Vinow, and I'm a board member, along with Dana Booth, on the Carlisle Historical Society. And we're here to support Scott, and we've looked at, and I was involved in actually, Scott's committee, being the liaison between his group and the Carlisle Historical Society. So we are in full support of the summary and proposal, and I think it will be a great day.
Good.
Super. Dana? Anybody else want to say anything? Anyone online have any questions? All right. As much as I feel like I normally would love to just do this, I think with our challenges we've encountered with subcommittees and everything else, it would probably make sense if we could just review this over, and to hold it over till our next meeting, and we can do a quick.
That's why it says draft on it.
All right, perfect. So why don't we plan on that as a placeholder for.
Ryan, I will send you the Word version, so it can be edited instead of the PDF.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I will also march with you.
Okay.
In uniform.
Well, the real one, yeah. I want to fight redcoats.
My son was fifth of foot, so reenactor, so bearskin and all. And my daughter was in the pipe and drum.
Excellent.
I've done many, many, April, frozen on many an April morning.
All right, well, thank you, Scott, and thanks, Chris, for coming, and appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we are ahead of schedule, but I think, you know, since Peggy is here, do we have to stick with exact times? We do?
Yeah, we should for that one, yeah.
No, for the early voting? We have to stick with that?
We have to stick with that. So is there a placeholder? We can, can we do something?
TA report. TA report.
TA report for a part of it?
We could do the minutes, too.
Oh, we could do the minutes.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
It's 7:50. Make it till 8:00.
So Ryan's queuing up something for us here.
I'll just go. So some town hall news and events. The land use file project is humming. We are getting rid of some of the, not getting rid of, we are properly filing some flat files and moving some of the cabinetry in order to reignite the cubicle plan upstairs. So thank you to the land use departments for focusing on it. We're taking the one box of the day approach and tackling a massive, massive project. The healed and the parlin rooms now have touch view screens. Some boards and committees are already taking advantage of this technology, so the idea is to have wireless and somewhat seamless meetings for people to have hybrid meetings, both to be broadcast to the community and internal department meetings and staff meetings. So each one is the same. We've been training staff on how to use it, and they in turn can train boards and committees, or we can have boards and committees come in. We've already had two or three come in and start to learn. They are, they are designed to be easy, so on purpose. We talked about Judy. She's joining the constipation commission. She'll work with Sylvia. She already started this week. We have a couple of applications for the vacant municipal assistant position after not having any luck getting applicants, so we're very excited to have two qualified applicants that we may be re-interviewing as early as next week. And Jim is interviewing a candidate for the heavy equipment operator, and we believe we have a police candidate to bring to you, but we are going through the necessary background investigations, et cetera. So should have a lot more appointments for you in February. Some budget updates for you. We are continuing to receive warrant article requests. I probably won't get to that list, but I'll present it at some point tonight to you. We have 26 solid warrant article placeholders with as many as 28, and that, that will fluctuate until the warrant closes on the 13th of February. We also reserved the CPS auditorium for May 16th, 2024, as a backup date for annual town meeting. And as, as you've told me before, we're cheering for one night and not having to use that second night. The school committee voted to recommend the creation of a special education stabilization fund, and we have been, the chair and I have been invited to come and talk to, on that. I have some opinions on that that I wanted to share, and they will be coming to you to discuss that fund. The Concord-Carlyle Regional High School reduced their projected operating budget request, resulting in a $24,000 reduction from draft one of our total budget. They are continuing to work with the Concord Finance Committee and Select Board to finalize that budget, and I have been invited to those meetings as well. So I'm connected in those conversations with the Finance Committee and the liaisons. The Insurance Advisory Committee will likely complete their work on assessing health insurance options. We did hear from Maya this weekend that our health insurance increase is 9.9%, which is a pretty big whack. It's the highest in the state. Most of that is because we have 105% loss ratio, which means we are not going to get relief that some towns are seeing. So we will get the maximum increase, and that does have some budget implications. It does not change projections from draft one, but it also does not give us any relief, and that was a conservative number. The IAC is looking at plan design changes and other options that, that might reduce some of that cost. So that cost is both to the town budget and to the employees, so it eats into potential COLA and other consideration for employees in addition to stretching our budget. So not good news overall. The Finance Committee started their marathon meetings last night. Very productive and good meetings with departments, really digging into numbers. It was good to see the back and forth. They are finishing those meetings on Wednesday. I'll be there for that as well. And then you should get a draft two budget, and trying to schedule a meeting between you and the Finance Committee for February 13th, where you'll see the second version of the budget after the FinCom has digested and worked through a lot of the department requests, and we've received numbers from the state, from the schools, and from some of the mandatory spending that I talked about already. The state aid numbers are not finalized yet, but the draft that we received demonstrates that we will get very little relief in Chapter 70 money and very little relief in state aid, unrestricted government aid dollars. We believe the total package will be somewhere between 2% and 3%, but again, no major budget relief from draft one of the budget. Land use summit, we're recommending, because of several pending issues and some deep discussions that are required, that this board makes a concerted effort in before the town meeting and during the budget process to meet with the land use department specifically about cranberry bog maintenance. You'll see a little bit of that tonight, and some of the capital investments that'll come from that property, MBTA zoning requirements, accessory apartment bylaw changes, and long-term building and capital needs. I think getting all of the land use boards and associated boards, especially the ones that own property, in the same room to discuss the long-term capital requirements would, would bring some more, would shed some more light on where the holes are in our budget and our long-term planning, and allow everyone to row in the same direction. I don't think there's a lot of disunity. I just think conversation solidifying the long-term plan will help, will help clarify some of the budget discussions.
Just one quick comment there, our question. So is that something, assuming we think that's a good idea, is that something that you'll initiate and pull us together around?
Yes, it would be maybe off-cycle or just a really big, big room, select board meeting that might need to happen in the school community room or some other resource.
Okay. And do we want to indicate that we support this idea tonight?
We could.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, and I think we should so that the planning could happen to figure out when.
Yep. I think you have four people who just kind of raised their...
And I agree with the off-cycle, like, it should be its own meeting.
I think that as well.
When you have that many people, it definitely has to be off-cycle because it gives you more flexibility to find a date.
It's also going to be two hours at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a select board initiative, right? We'll do that. Okay, great.
Excellent. Some procurement updates. We have three minutes here, so I'll keep going. The DPW trailer sprinkler system, which is one of the more popular projects in town, the cement pad has been, and laid, the shed has been built, and looking to finalize this in the coming month pending weather. But they are, the vendor is working around the weather, and all of our departments, our building commissioner, the DPW, the MFC are all working hard to get this done. We would like it to be impactful for this plowing season to give some relief to our DPW workers. The dog park has been downsized in scope and rebrought to the planning board for them to consider. I signed the application on behalf of the town today for them to reconsider that project, so that is not, that is not dead yet. It is much smaller than it was and different in size and layout, but might still make the grant cycle, so still, still working through the dog park procurement.
When you say the grant cycle, you mean they might be coming back for additional funds?
They have a grant.
You mean the foundation grant?
And they're holding the money.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I just wanted to clarify that.
No impact to the town budget yet. The core auditorium lighting, we're trying to work through the second half of the procurement. So the first part came in where we thought, but the electrical construction part of it was more expensive, which is a second procurement that we did for this project. So we're trying to see if we can do that in-house, or if we're allowed by state law to reshape the RFP based on some new information we have to try and reduce the cost, so we can complete that before our earmark expires at the end of the FY '24 budget cycle. And the Green Oak Barn bid package is now out to bid, so we should see that. That's going to be a great project at the end of February. We should see where we are with those proposals.
You said it's not live, but you mean it is live?
It is live, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It says it's not live.
Yeah.
I think that T was supposed to be a W. Now live.
Now live.
And it is now eight o'clock.
Beautiful.
So nicely done. So Peggy?
No one came. I thought some of my comes.
Well, you scheduled this for eight o'clock, so. I think you have to sit in the other chair because that microphone is not working or working well. Thanks. All right, so, early voting in-person hours. Peggy?
Early voting in-person hours for the March 5th presidential primary.
Okay.
And as in the past, for the primaries, I've tried to stagger hours instead of just having the same hours every day. We have to do four hours on Saturday. Thankfully, we no longer have to do a Sunday, and the other days are two hours per day.
With, and this is in the run-up to the following Tuesday? The actual election day is the following Tuesday?
Yes.
Which would be a full, what would the hours be on the 5th itself?
Yes, on the 5th.
Would be what hours on the 5th?
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, so the full, the full day, whatever.
Yes. It was only town elections where we were allowed to reduce.
Ah, okay, yeah. And the blowback we got was on the actual voting day was too narrow, not the run-up days? Was that the problem?
Yeah, the change in the hours.
Yes, that's what I understand.
Right, but because it was only a town election.
Right.
But now it's a full, they have the full 11 or whatever hours, so, okay, okay.
And then in that, only 307 people voted during that.
And 371 people complained about it.
I know. Heard it also.
Now Peggy, I'm just, just asking a question about the, the hours here. So I see that there's one weekday that goes till 6, that's 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
She's trying to stagger it.
Yeah, no, I heard her say that. And then the Saturday time. I'm just wondering, so that, in the past, has, has your experience been that there are not that many voters that want to vote, that need or want to vote after work hours on a weekday?
Well...
I'm just curious because you have the other...
Historically, a lot of people are not voting early in person, and it doesn't even matter the hours and the days. They're all doing it by mail.
Can you give us some statistics about that? Do you have anything?
Yeah, like, for the, what were called the mid-terms, we had 316 early voting in person with a total ballot count of 2,834, so just over 10% were early voting in person.
And the mailing of that was about what, would you say?
About half.
About half mailed in?
Yes.
Of the 316?
No, no.
Of the 2,000?
316 is in-person.
In-person, okay.
And about, you're saying about 1,000? How many did it do?
By mail.
By mail?
Over 1,000 by mail.
1,000, yeah.
Let's see, so for the state primary in 2022, 102 people voted early voting in person. I didn't get the number on what the total count was. We did have a really large number in the very first in the early voting in person for the 2020 presidential election, and in that case, we had over 1,000 vote early in person.
What hours, do you recall what hours roughly we had available then?
Let me look. It was the same two hours a day.
Okay.
And some, some, we also had Sundays at that time, and they've, they've scaled back on having to do Sundays and two Saturdays. That also is over a course of 10 days instead of five, so it's, it's double. The primary is half of what the general election is, so there's more days.
So the general will be bigger in November.
Longer time period.
It will be, yeah, twice as many days.
Yeah, right, okay.
With two Saturdays, and, but in, in that case, the turnout was higher, but we were also right at the beginning of mailing in. People were being very distrustful of mailing in. I don't know if that will change.
Mm-hmm.
But as we've moved, as we've been, as we move forward, people are less likely to vote early in person, and I'm hearing that from other town clerks and friends of mine who've gone to the polls, saying Bill Ricker.
Why do you think that is?
I think it's because people want to vote by mail.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
More by mail, it's just easier.
Yes, yeah. Just to, just by chatting with people and their voting experience and town clerk chatting.
So it's not, right, so the amount of in-person on the election day isn't changing that much? It's the shift from early voting to mail-in voting, kind of?
Yes, yes. I did agree with that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So do we have a motion?
Well, Barney, if you, if you're proposing, do you think that you want to try to do a different...
No, I was just asking really what are, what your experience had been, just to, because I know, you know, and again, it's anecdotal, right, that some people have said it was difficult to vote if they, you know, if they were people that didn't get back into town necessarily by 6:00. But for this presidential primary, which is, I don't think going to be a heavily watched one in Massachusetts, I, I think we're okay with it.
It's part of, yeah. I guess, though, I think you're right about that, but the schedule is confusing, right? People are going to, because it's, I understand...
Different every day?
Every day is different, and so I think if people, I guess it's a question, if people decide to vote in person the week before, they like have to look it up, right? Because they're never going to remember which day is which, right?
You know, we'll have it posted on the town website, but still.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
We do, we post it in the paper.
Yeah.
Is it better to just have two slots, like 8:00 to 10:00, and 4:00 to 6:00, and just some days are each attendance, or just make it like a little simpler?
Assistant, yeah.
Peggy has a rationale for this, right? The reason you came up with these?
Just to vary it for people and watch to see what happens. And in, what I found is that it didn't make much difference. Even the four hours on Saturday, it just wasn't great turnout. There were hour, there were several times, there were a whole hour where nobody came in.
Yeah.
And we are, we are, have four hours on Saturday for those people who might find it more difficult to get home by 6:00.
Yeah.
And we, yes, you could still come in and vote absentee in person up until noon the day before the election, so there are many options for people.
You mean you can come in anytime that you're in and get an absentee ballot?
Or absentee to vote absentee in person.
So even if you miss the window, you just, but if you show up and it wasn't in the two-hour slot?
You could get a ballot.
Just go get a ballot, right? Yeah.
Yeah, you have to vote, yeah, but you have to vote then and there. You don't take a ballot with you, yeah.
Yeah.
It's okay.
I think that's...
I think we're good.
All right. Do you have a motion?
Do we have one in the packet or no? Yeah, here it is. I move that the Select Board accept the town clerks recommended early voting in-person hours for the March 5th, 2024 presidential primary is presented in the packet.
Second.
Any further discussion, Kate? Nope. All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Nodell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yep, so Peggy would always say it's, it's part of her job, and she's a professional, but I have witnessed in the last couple of months her having to be here on, on weekends and other times in order to preside over the elections and other things, and I, I think it's commendable that she commits the time she does, her office does. They have to do a lot of things that we don't have to do, and that's not always known, so I'd just like to thank Peggy for it and just call that out.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
You know, one thing that occurs to me, and I know we, it might be helpful to some people, is if we could get something put up in the rotary when, when this week is happening. I don't know if we have anything like an early voting.
We might have a discussion about the rotary.
Yeah, I have to get approval.
I have that authority.
Thought that we did last time.
Yeah, so I don't know what we have, but anyway, it'd be good to put something out, I think.
Including the rotary, yes.
Early voting in person begins Saturday, two twenty-four. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll think about it, see if we can get it. Okay?
Thanks, Peggy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's eight ten. Regional study report on the MAPC.
Who's doing that?
Very punctual. That is, that is, in my experience in public meetings, that is incredible that you were able to time that.
Well, thank you. That is a really nice compliment to this vice chair subbing in for being the chair, so.
So Brian and Michael are joining us from MAPC. The board will remember, this study was commissioned a while ago. It was grant-funded from DLTA funds. They were to look at our operations generally and assess chances for shared services. And this would lead to a couple more steps for the board. So first, understanding the universe and potential, what other towns like ours do. And then we can put in, and I've started to put in another grant for targeting certain areas for further study. So this is the broad shared studies, study. And then it would result in maybe you wanting to look at some things more deeply or more closely with the same cast of characters. That's just the setup. And Brian and Michael are here to take you through a presentation and answer your questions.
I see Julie's here too. Are you participating in this or not? Okay, just listening, sorry.
Likes municipal government.
I love it. All right. So take it away, guys.
All right, absolutely. Well, first, I want to thank you for having us. We appreciate your patience on this report. I know we started this process a little while ago. And, and so I just want to thank you for your patience. Our presentation's really intended to kind of follow the report as, in alignment of how things are presented in the report. And if you read the whole report, thank you. Also, I commend you. It is a lengthy report, so I appreciate your diligence. And at any point during the presentation, if you have a question, you can feel free to stop me or if you want to hold it to the end, those are however you prefer. And, and just for quick introductions, my name's Brian Lutho. I'm the municipal services manager in the municipal collaboration department. I'm joined here by my colleague, Michael Pierce. He's a municipal services specialist. And, and you know, today, we comprise the municipal services function in our municipal collaboration department. Our specialties really like, consist of these types of municipal studies. We also conduct a fair amount of procurement work. And we also do shared services implementation. So we do a fair amount of the agreement work between communities, a lot of the cost-sharing structure and sort of like deliberative meetings to kind of find alignment between, between the parties that are in the respective space. So we do have a fair amount of experience in this. And so, you know, I, I don't know if you, I know the slides are in the packet. Would it be easy for me to share my screen to kind of go through the slides as, as we have them? Or what's the best way to?
That would be great.
Sure, just give me one second. I will.
We have forty minutes for this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get through it fast.
Yes. All right, can you all see this right here?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. So just, yeah, as Ryan already alluded to, just a quick recap. Our project goals were to document Carlisle's existing service structure, identify existing shared services and existing peer department relationships, identify service areas and the benefits of service sharing by providing contextual information on similar local shared servicing, shared service endeavors, and then provide recommendations and initial steps to pursuing these shared service arrangements with your neighbors. Our process really consists of the initial information gathering, then doing some external research, and then where we are today, which is the final draft. So like most reports, we start with an executive summary that I can briefly go through. We, the three primary takeaways we had were that, you know, Carlisle definitely has some services that would benefit from, you know, enhancement through shared services or other sustainable measures through shared services. As a smaller community, like many other smaller communities, there's many departments or functions with a singular point of failure. And looking at like some backfilling agreements or just facilitating closer relationships with your neighbors would be beneficial to kind of prevent the type of disruption of services that can happen when there's staff turnover or other types of things like that. And then, you know, most importantly, we wanted to just highlight and emphasize that shared services are built on the relationships that your admin and your staff build with your neighboring communities. And, and just overall, by prioritizing this relationship development, you're closer to taking the next and more formal steps in this process. And that's a very broad and general statement, but we'll get, we'll get more into that as we go along. So just, I thought it was important to just start with the basics. Just, this is a brief list of some of the, some of the primary benefits and the primary challenges that some shared services arrangements do encounter and enjoy, depending on which side of the coin we're on. You know, most importantly, I think communities do come together for this type of service to address some shared challenges, you know, improve their service delivery and the sustainability of their services. And, and also, you know, the concept of cost efficiency, providing more robust service over a broader service area. I just want to highlight the difference between cost efficiency and, and cost reductions because we often find that it's actually, it takes a heavy upfront resource, resource investment, whether that be time or funding, to stand up these types of services. But obviously, you'll see throughout some of the examples we have, those things, those benefits stack over time as you become, as you get the ball rolling and start to really deliver and build on the services that you do well. And you know, and again, generally, the challenge is, especially for those who don't, the service endeavors that don't have strong relationships between the parties, is really building that trust, you know, aligning the goals and priorities of, of the, of each of the parties and then reflective in the services. You know, one of the other largest hurdles, what a lot of times we help with, is the contracting and governance structure of these types of endeavors. As we all know, Massachusetts is all about local control. And so making sure that everyone's, everyone's interests are reflected and have a structure that everyone's comfortable with to kind of scenario plan for anything that could possibly happen. And then again, a resource allocation, same sort of concept where you want to make sure that there's a structure in place that everyone's happy with. So, you know, starting with, you know, fourteen different departments provided us by Ryan, we organized into the four categories mainly for the ease of digestion of the information and also to organize some of the concepts and the interconnectedness of, of these departments. So I wouldn't say these categories are, are perfect, but we, you know, we stuck with them as, throughout the study just to make sure that it was easier to present the information and digest it. You know, we, sorry, I lost my place just a bit. So we conducted interviews with each of the respective department heads or lead staff of these departments or functions, which I'll use interchangeably, departments, functions, office, however you want to, however you want to slice it. And we asked, we asked a series of questions intended to document the, you know, the primary budget increase drivers, the primary challenges of providing the service, the staffing structure, and also the relationships that these, these staff have with their, their peers and neighboring departments. You know, in the report, we did document the findings for each department, kind of more in detail of how, of how we, of what we've learned about each one and kind of, you know, just kind of documenting a little bit of thought about how each service is provided and some of those thoughts. I won't go into each one of them today just because that's a, it's a lot of info to go through in a, in the presentation format. But I'm happy if anyone has any questions on any particular department to ask at a, at a point in time when I can, you know, revisit that. And, and overall, I think we found that, something like, something like we've noted before, that there are, you know, you're a smaller community with smaller sized departments and you have the potential for, you know, and, and previous land experience of the hardships of staff turnover, vacations extended on, on, unanticipated leaves. We also learned some really interesting things, particularly around public safety. I really enjoyed the conversations we had about the level of service and some of the calls that your, your, your police department and dispatch will, will take, which is a change from some of the neighboring departments where, you know, I've heard of stories of, of, you know, the police department helping, helping someone move a couch. And it's like, that's, that's a really high level of service. I really appreciate having that local, that local flavor and that service reflected in the service, in the services that you're, you provide. You know, and obviously, there's, there's benefits. I think each municipal government, you know, as we've noticed throughout our experience in this one and in others, is, is really reflected on the, the public's will to fund those services and the level of service that's demanded of those, of the residents. And so, you know, I think that, that uniqueness of the, of each department, I think, is, is a strength in terms of how the services you provide to residents. But obviously, it becomes more of a challenge when it comes to sharing services with other, with your neighbors. And, and so in this report, we did, you know, and obviously stemming from these conversations, we wanted to document the existing service sharing that you already, you might already have, that you, you might not over, might not consider a shared service or overlook in terms just because, I mean, some of these services have been around for a long time. Some of them are really, are really essential for the service provision of each, of individual departments. And, and some of them are really new. But we thought it was really important to highlight some of these, some of these, these current existing shared services in which Carlisle participates. So just going down the list, the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium doesn't necessarily, I mean, I know library consortiums aren't necessarily considered a shared service because every town is part of one. But, you know, starting in the nineteen eighties, just based on making, starting just by making like e-check-in, which we think of now as like a staple service of libraries, like more affordable for smaller communities, the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium is really built on a lot of the, the service, starting there, starting small and building on those services, has built out a large suite of services that your, that really, your library relies on, and also a knowledge sharing community for all of the library directors in the, in the consortium. Miniman Senior Services is also a, a large suite of services provided by a central agency that your, your council of aging and social services really rely on. Great Meadows Public Health Collaborative, that's a, that's a new service that's heavily, that's entirely grant-funded as part of the Massachusetts State Action for Public Health Excellence Grant, of which I have a, a large amount of experience on, so I'd happily go into detail. More about the service in general as a state, but also like in terms of Great Meadows. I think you, 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 having seen many of these endeavors, Great Meadows is actually a really strong level of service and really has their act together in terms of the, you know, having a service that's available to communities and, and relied upon. But also like in terms of the state's, the state's priorities of, of building out a more functional regional or shared service function, it's really great. Another thing we wanted to note is the Recreation Department. They do a lot of informal service sharing in terms of programming with their neighbors, and they have like good relationships with some of the neighboring departments. Another health-related one, the Human Health and Medical Coordinating Council and the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coalition, all centered around coordinating, you know, emergency preparedness and, and public health. And then we did note that there's, you did, you did previously have a shared staff member through a grant, through the Sustainability Coordinator.
Excuse me, Brian, I do have one quick question, just, just to give us a little more information. When you say the Great Meadows Public Health Collective is relatively new and you said it was grant-funded, what is an example of some of the services that we might have received from that?
Yeah, for sure. So the Great Meadows, they have an effective backfilling, like staff backfilling. They have a series of public health nurses that, that, you know, I actually, I have, I actually have the whole list of staff. It's actually interesting, there's two grants that kind of fold into the same type of service area. There's Public Health Excellence Grant and there's a Case Tracing Collaborative Grant. And so both of those grants provide, you know, I wouldn't necessarily say, call them auxiliary health services because, because as the pandemic showed that a lot of these, there's a lot of, of like, like public health services that might have been underfunded or, or not known or very publicly out in front. But Great Meadows, they do a lot, I mean, it's really centered around inspectional services and inspectional backfilling. There's public health services, public health nursing services, so like shared clinics and, and resources. A lot of messaging in terms of like the, the ways in which to, like reaching the public and, and shared messaging. I know the, the CTC side of the grant has a, has a shared epidemiologist who can provide a lot of data work and kind of also digesting the newest updated like public health guidance, which is, you know, as we've seen in the last few years, is constantly changing. So, but yeah, I think Carlisle is very active in that space and has utilized the, the backfilling function of this collaborative.
Excuse me a second, Brian, sorry, I just want to understand this a little bit more. When you say backfilling, you mean if we, if, if our public health nurse cannot, she has to leave the position for a while or something, you're saying this collaborative would provide someone to take that place for a while?
Yep, exactly.
Got it. And, okay.
This already, this already happened, so when we had the gap in coverage when Chris left before we hired Janine and Linda was on vacation this summer or out of the office, they backfilled assistant level work. And we, we had the semblance of being open and still being able to provide health services. That was Great Meadows.
Thanks. That's, that's good for me.
Absolutely. So I, I mean, I think that's important, we just, we highlight the existing service share than you're already doing that, that, you know, you might not, might not be perfectly aware of at all times. Because it's, I mean, it's a robust level of services that all municipalities in two and Carlisle provide, so it's hard to keep track of everything. So you know, also, we did reach out to a lot of neighboring departments and neighboring communities and really highlighted some of the, the high-performing shared service collaboratives in the region, some of which, you know, MAPC has been helpful in terms of establishing and maintaining. You know, first, I want to highlight the North Shore Regional IT Collaborative, which consists of eight communities. The lead community is Danvers, I believe. I believe, Ryan, actually, you, you are familiar with the brains behind this operation, Colby Cousins, who is the IT director in Danvers. And, and I think this is, the real lesson here is to, is one, the relationships that the town admin had with each other. They're, they all work really well together and had a shared vision and implemented it. The opportunistic ability for the Danvers IT department to, to support more communities and the willingness to take on the, the extra, the extra burden and extra work. And also just, when you put together a shared, like a shared collaborative, they've become more of like a state funnel for, for grant funds. So they're really able to enhance their services because they, they are really, they're, they're constantly getting additional grants to further research new services, implement new services. And, and I could talk about that one for a while because I have been pretty involved in that one. The other one we looked at was the North Shore Regional 911 Dispatch Center. This was interesting too. I think for, for most people who are familiar with regional dispatch centers, they can be really challenging to implement. This one's a little, this one's over ten years old, and I think most of the participants will say like, it was really challenging to get to where they are today. But I think now, now that there has been established, they provide a really high-level service. And, and that's important to note that they're actually free to the communities that, that use them as, as the state has funded, fully funded this service. And they are considered actually a state entity, even though they serve dispatch for, you know, six communities in the North Shore. The other one I wanted to highlight too is Hamilton and Wenham Shared Building Commissioner. This one I found was really interesting. I mean, for those who aren't familiar with Hamilton and Wenham, they share a lot. They, they are very much intertwined. They have a shared, a shared assessment project. They have a shared school district. They have a shared library. I feel like I'm missing one more. But they, they have a very interconnected administration, and that's actually withstood multiple town admin turnover. But that relationship's really well-established. And the innovative structure for this one is what I wanted to highlight, where, you know, people think of shared services or regionalization, which I tend to shy away from the word regionalization because it has a lot of, a lot of, it implies a lot of things. But in this service, it's in particular, the, they created a structure where they keep an admin at each of the offices to kind of maintain that local access to the service. But then the back, the back office hard skills of, you know, inspecting permits and a lot of, a lot of the core functions of a building commissioner are shared. And so, you know, you keep that office and the, you know, local residents can still go to their own town hall for a service. But, you know, and having an admin in the, staffing that office. But the hard skills is on the backend is shared, which you wouldn't know walking into the office. And then, you know, there'll be, we've seen regional shared, regional or shared housing services offices popping up across the region for, for more of the, more of the time-consuming, complicated skills of maintaining your, you know, housing stock, including like your, your affordable housing stock. Maintain, you know, a lot of, I mean, housing is a very large issue, which we could go back into. But for smaller communities with, with, with a single-staff town planner, this model of like a joint procurement for a consultant that kind of runs an, an office accessible to all the communities has been something that's been starting to pop up more and more. And as recently as the last eight months, we've seen a new one in, in the Southwest run by Hoppington, which has been useful for those communities. And yeah, so I kind of already discussed a lot of this already, but, you know, there are a lot of relevant highlights for Carlisle. Like starting small and building over time. Can't emphasize this one enough, it, like the Merrimack Library, Merrimack Valley Library Consortium in the nineteen eighties, and then building out the whole suite of IT services that they've, that they've grown to now is a really integral service. And a lot of those, the, the communities are really intertwined in terms of like the data that they share and the accessibility to each of those networks has been really, is really exemplary for a shared service. Excuse me. You know, Great Meadows and the staff backfilling, I already mentioned that. You know, North Shore Regional IT, yeah, I think I mentioned this, but also like the enhancement of their services through this shared collaborative where, like one thing I noticed, I was listening earlier when you mentioned, you know, MYA and the, and the cost increase for insurance. Well, one thing that's also happened in the last few years is MYA's really increased their, their IT requirements to, to submit for their cybersecurity package. This is something that the collaborative had anticipated and had been able to implement and react with, with enhancement of those services and still comply with those requirements for those and maintain those insurance requirements just by part of the collaborative where each of those communities would have been really, it would have been really difficult to maintain that had they not been in this shared collaborative. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight too is, yeah, shared, yeah, and like with Hamilton and Wenham, shared services and regionalization don't necessarily mean the same thing. shared services and regionalization don't necessarily mean the same thing, but also it don't necessarily require reduction in service level to residents. I think one thing I wanted to really highlight too, which I think can sometimes be overlooked, especially looking at, you know, like, like the priorities of like admin or a select board versus, you know, and not versus, in tandem with like looking at certain services. It's really critical that, for the implementation and creation of these services, that the working relationships between the departments is something that's been established and prioritized. I think the most successful shared services collaboratives start with a shared, like a working relationship and familiarity with the staff who are involved. You know, relationships with town admin can often, often aid these initiatives too, because every shared service initiative has to go through various levels of approval. That includes, that includes town administration and select board and, you know, typically your, your legal counsel. And so having relationships and familiarity with the towns and being able to, to work together at that level too, I think is really important. And we've seen, you know, many outcomes of that relationship, of those relationships and how, how it improves the service. And, you know, yeah, and I think that's really highlighted by throughout the creation implementation process, there's going to be constant challenges, issues to work out, details to refine and making sure that all the trust and transparency between all parties is, has been well-established and is, and is built, is important. I think we did highlight a couple of recommendations, I think, and we've mentioned this before, is addressing the singular points of failure and backfilling should, it should be a high priority. You've seen this with Great Meadows, it's can be very useful. I think, you know, obviously as a smaller community that, that you're in a certain, you're often certainly, and you're surrounded by neighbors who are not necessarily in the, in the exact same situation as you financially in terms of size. This would be something, this could be a starting point to like those conversations and, you know, eventually you can like, you know, there's other service enhancements that can be made from, from, from just starting the conversation at that point. Yeah, the North Shore IT actually is a good reference for this too, where Middleton actually had the, the funding in place to hire their own IT Director. And instead of doing that, they actually, they actually paid, they, you know, they make a, a transfer to Danvers for the, the funding that they would have spent hiring somebody to kind of put that person in the department as a, and part of their hierarchy. So instead of being a one-of-one in Middleton, they're still a one-of-one in Middleton with the resources of a larger department and also like the, the natural hierarchy of, and, and they can report to someone who also is very familiar with these types of issues and that kind of, kind of structure really enhances the services that Middleton receives in terms of quality, but also doesn't, you know, when you think about the scarcity of resources, it doesn't inhibit, it doesn't prohibit, excuse me, prohibit them from, from having access to that resource solely in the case of emergencies. And, and yeah, I think reaching out to neighbors is, and building relationships there is a, is a firm, is a fine starting point. The other thing, you know, I think we, we did highlight a few of the, of the, the functions of, of Carlisle that you, you could focus on initially too, if you, if these were interesting to you. You know, ADA Transit, I think you all know that Carlisle is very heavily residential, meaning many trips originate in Carlisle, but the destinations, the most demanded destinations are most likely out of, outside of town boundaries, so. Kind of, you know, there's, there's regional trending agencies, which don't necessarily, you know, perfectly provide services for this in, in the Carlisle region, but I, I think, you know, co-op-ing with, collaborating with, collaborating with some of your neighbors on this service in particular, there's, there's definitely some service improvements and efficiencies to be gained in that space. And then in terms of, like, and we know you have a newly established town planner position. I think there's some of those services, like the housing services and the GIS functions of that office that could be enhanced with some service sharing as well. Just because those are very hard skills that you won't, you don't necessarily have the funding for or demand for a full-time service staffer for those things, but looking at some of the neighboring departments that are larger that, that, that do fund that service, you know, or a full staff, they might be able to, to kind of enhance those services and, and provide that service for you with, with, with a very cost-effective solution. I think the, the relationship, we also noted, we did reach out to the school district and there's, you know, this is actually like a really challenging and nuanced relationship that you've already built with your school district, so I want to commend you on that. It's not often that a school district and a municipality work really well together and I think the relationships you built there is, is really strong and there's obviously, you know, some, some vital support services that you've kind of built out together. And so I think we, you know, in reaching out to them to kind of guess gauge their interest, human resources and IT are two areas that can become more integrated and can improve collectively. And then there are also more opportunities in terms of finance, like, like right now you do payroll, but there are limitations on that as, as we've, as we've noted too, it's, it's not, you can't bring those services perfectly integration just because they're, they're very different entities that, that there's required to be some segmentation there. We also think we want to, we want to flip the script a little bit too and encourage you to, to potentially, you know, you know, you could lead some service share and entertain the idea of leading a shared, a shared service in some areas. I think, you know, that's one of the harder parts of starting these initiatives, every, every service needs a lead. And I think, you know, it's, it's important to understand your strengths and, and think about where you could, where those opportunities kind of are. So like, you know, rural water supply, which is something that you, you have a lot of experience with because you, you have to. You know, recreation and senior programming is pretty strong and I think there's an opportunity there to lead some services there. If you wanted to formalize them more, there's an opportunity there. And then collaborative procurement, just based on some of the, the capital expenses that we see coming down the pike for Carlisle. It's, it's important to reach out to your neighbors and say, hey, we're doing this anyways, if any chance you wanted to participate. And so I think that's important also to, to recognize that, that you have the opportunity to lead those things and not just, not just participate or tag along and so. With that, that is, I've been talking for a long time, so I'm going to pause there and breathe and, and let you digest all the things that I have just mentioned. But, but yeah, I'd also love to hear any questions or feedback on the study.
Are there any questions on the board or comments?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great summary. We didn't have this, you just sent it, but did we have it prior or?
No, I wanted you to hear the.
Okay, so we haven't looked at the text, but, so Brian, a couple of things. One is you did mention you thought there were challenges to the combining of the finance function in the school and town. Can you elaborate on why you said that?
Yeah, I, I think that was more on the, on the willingness, on like through the interviews of, of, you know, it's controlling, or not, like having perfect access to all day-to-day finances, I think can, can, can sometimes be seen, be perceived as having the real control of the relationship and I think there's, there are some natural limitations of that, of that relationship. And so, I mean, there's definitely like on the, on the service side, like human resources, IT, some of those primary support functions, I think there's definitely room for expansion. And I think like even on the financial support aspects, there are some, there's some room for expansion there. But I think it's, it's, I'd encourage you to, to reach out to, you know, those in the, in the, in the district to kind of just see where those opportunities are and, and where those, and just get a firmer understanding of where those limitations are for each of you. But yeah, we did note that there were some limitations just based on the, on the interviews that we can, we conducted because.
Meaning people expressed a reluctance to try to go in that direction?
I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say reluctance is the right word, I would just say that like there's, 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 obviously there's, there's benefits of integrating, but there's also like, there's also some, yeah, I mean, like, just like maintaining your, like the local control that you have over your own services, but also like on the school district side, you know, having, having complete access to the ledger can, can, I would say is, is something that they might not be interested in.
Yeah, but I mean, that's globally true, right? People don't like to give up control and they don't always like to provide access. That's one of the headwinds generally, but.
Yeah.
I'm getting out of that, there's nothing specific about the finance function that jumped, jumped out. I mean, you indicated, for example, I mean, we've trusted HR, which is also sensitive information.
Yeah.
Is being entrusted, so there's trust there.
Yeah, yeah, no, there absolutely is, is trust there, I would just, and I think, yeah, it was, it was more of like the, yeah, I, I think you, I think you said, you said it best. There's, there's just natural limitations to the integration between the, they're very two different entities with two different goals. I would say there, there's, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have it listed right there, but I could go back into my notes and, and kind of.
That's okay, I think I got a flavor. The other question then I'll relinquish is, so you, you don't actually though, I mean, you've given us a few suggestions, but you're not particularly prescriptive or about area, you know, places where we might, you have a few things where we might offer our services and I guess I have to go back to the presentation. But you don't really give guidance, like where's the next step we should go to, right?
Well, so I think, so I think in terms of the conference, so just for, just for reference, you know, we get approached to kind of facilitate or help with shared services in a, in a wide spectrum of services, functions and, and at different points in the process. And so I would say that Carlisle's still very much in its infancy in this process. I, I would say one thing we didn't want to do is we didn't want to approach other communities with the intent, like saying like, hey, we're representing Carlisle and we speak for them, they're interested in doing this and engaging in this conversation and sharing their services because we, we know we, we wanted to gather the information and provide this to you, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to represent you in that way. Just, just to avoid any, you know, crossing of wires. And I would say like the, the primary step that I think we've outlined there is really just prioritizing building those relationships. We did note a wide variety of professional like organizations that each of the departments can, can engage in. You know, similar like you think about, like one of the more established ones is we saw through the library consortium is there's 30 communities plus of library directors that meet constantly, meet monthly. Not just through the consortium, but also separately on their own. And that's really one of the best ways to build that working relationship, identify those shared challenges. And then, you know, those things naturally organically start to come up with, when you start thinking about this in a, with a regional lens of like, this is a challenge that I, I experienced, but also all the communities have the same challenge. These ideas start to really flow and, and I think that's also how you build, you build that trust, so. So like, so I would say like, you know, there are communities that come out and say like, we are like, so for example, the North Shore IT Collaborative is like, we are seven communities and we want to share this service. We've done a feasibility report from a, from a vendor through a grant and that lists all these services we can share. We need to figure out how to craft an agreement and do it this way. I would say, you know, you're not necessarily there yet. I think that's, you know, like Ryan has mentioned, we, we want to do a part two and, and start to engage and dig a little bit deeper. But I think like the, the real, the real step is to, is to work with your, your staff, kind of build those relationships with the neighboring communities. I know a lot of the staff, like not, I wouldn't say a lot of the staff, but there are some, some staff members that are fairly, fairly new that have relationships from prior, prior employment. But I think like re-establishing and understanding their department and then re-establishing those relationships, thinking about those things on a regional level, I think is an, is an important, is an important step that really can't be overlooked just because the shared services, like collaboratives or groups that we see that have the most trouble are the ones that haven't really established that familiarity and that trust between the parties.
Okay, thank you.
Kate, did you have anything you wanted to ask or?
No, I just wanted to comment that it's, it's clear, it's staff to staff, not select board to select board. It's, it's really dependent on our staff. We might direct our staff to be looking but for opportunities, but, and I think we need to encourage our staff to, you know, belong to as many organizations as they can because that's where they make those, I'm going to call them fraternal kind of relationships, where they get to know one another, they build trust there and then they network.
Yep. Well, and, and as a select board, two years ago, we had this as one of our goals and we use the term regionalization and I learned tonight, I think that's a really good distinction to talk about shared services, not regionalization, because of just the semantics of that, but we, we had that as a goal and I think that, you know, this report has kind of helped to validate what we've been doing here. You talked about trust and leadership and, you know, we've kind of done that internally and I've really watched this unfold with our, you know, municipal facilities and how, you know, we had a separate, you know, kind of, we're, we're working to kind of try to, to share those services with the town and the school and, you know, it's taken trust and it's taken some leadership primarily on Ryan's part, but on a lot of people working behind the scenes to make that happen. So, you know, this, this seems like we're headed in the right direction and.
Good. Yeah, I would, I would, I would reiterate that, yeah, absolutely. I think that, like you, you, you said it perfectly. It, it does, yeah, like encouraging staff to kind of engage in those relationships. I think the leadership and having alignment at the leadership level too is, is super important. The familiarity is, is really important and I think, you know, these things do take time. Like you think about the, like the library consortium started with like a quick, just a quick way to get like a really high enhancement of services to be affordable for some of the smaller communities and then, you know, it's been existed for over, you know, since the 80s, since the late 80s. And so, you know, kind of thinking about this as like a, like a, you know, it's a, it's a mid to long-term plan. And I think, you know, definitely you're on the, you're on the right track. I think as, as you, as you gain that familiarity at the staff level, at the admin level with your, your neighbors, you might find those opportunities to be a lot more, a lot more like available and, and, and more obvious. But yeah, I think it really comes down, it's, it's often overlooked. And then again, also like, we tend to shy away from saying the word regional in terms of like regionalization, just because it, you know, these, this, this process is also inherently political and I think, I think people think, you know, the public thinks here's regionalization and they think, you know, that they're going to have to go to Acton to like, you know, to, you know, to go to like, to get a police report and it's like, that's not, that's not really, it's, it's a shared service and there's models that can actually continue and maintain that level of service to residents where you can go to, you know, they have that local access of, of service. And so I think like using the term shared services is, is more reflective of the actual relationship, but also kind of avoids any of those preconceived notions of regionalization.
I think, you know, just, I didn't, actually hadn't thought of it till tonight when you brought it up, but just the way that the notion of physical work, work does not necessarily mean you physically are in the workplace. We've decoupled sort of your location from your ability to contribute. So I've always thought of regionalization or shared services in that context as neighboring towns. But there's really, I mean, if we're not talking about police or fire, if we're just talking about things like IT or GIS or whatever, there's no particular reason that the two towns need to be co-located. And so if we expand our, and, and you made a good point that we have a lot of new staff that come from different towns, there's no reason why we can't be pursuing those alliances, you know, with the North Shore, right? I mean, why not?
Right.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I, I know for a fact that, like the North Shore IT Collaborative doesn't require like a contiguous relationship between the communities. For some service sharing it does, but not always, like a physical connection. And then I know the dispatch center does have a non-contiguous town that's a member of those services and, and they are, they are also open to expanding too. So, I mean, even just exploring those initial conversations, we learn from their experiences to kind of present this information to you, but I think if you approach those, those entities, those, those shared services with the, with, you know, that, that lens and seeing what their willingness is too, I think that's also like a, a quick first step to, to seeing what your options are too.
Good.
We're just two quick points, sorry. The, so the next step for this is to apply for a grant that would allow us to target some specific functions. In particular, the, the board has long talked about some public safety, the financial operations of the town and then community services, so the three different types. Not saying those are the three things, but there are things identified in this report that could be looked at deeper. So the next ask of the board is going to be to digest the study and the presentation and then we'll have an opportunity to engage with, with a firm like MIPC to investigate some of these. And the most alarming things to me, just to offer my two cents, is this is the fourth report, if you include the succession planning report that you have not gotten yet, that identifies single points of failure as one of the most alarming parts of our structure. And the idea that we should share internally first before we look to share externally matches some of the things we've been talking about in, in my time here at least, which is flexible staff, which comes from the master plan, not me. And the idea of sharing with our neighbors, not necessarily to send someone to get service, but to, to have the backup support that's necessary if something, if someone moves on or that type of thing. Then lastly, we have a lot of talented staff. We should be looking to, in some cases, longer terms, succession planning, sell our talented department heads that might outgrow Carlisle to be the lead for regionalization. They, they have the talent to, to manage regions, rather than losing them, we could leverage their, their talents in that way if we think into the future. So I could name some department heads, I'm not going to do that because I would like them to stay, but as we think about succession planning for each department, we should think about opportunities to grow people inside the community while also allowing their careers to expand, which would give us another five to 10 years of their service.
I just want to add the one sentence I happen to highlight. I just want to add, the one sentence I happen to highlight in the report says that the most successful shared service endeavors are not a response to budgetary constraints, but it evolved from a shared understanding of service delivery and challenge. And I think that's what we want to keep in mind. This is not a matter of saving money, it's a matter of giving better service.
Yep.
Yep. Well, thank you, Brian and Michael, that was very helpful, and, you know, I think we'll, we'll take this up and, you know, see where we go from here, so.
Absolutely, and I encourage, I encourage you to read the report, if you get a chance. It is a long report, I think it's around 20 pages, but we put our, we put our blood, sweat, and tears into that report, and so, if we, if you have any feedback at all or any other thoughts, feel free, I mean, like, Ryan has my email, just feel free to reach out to us at any time. We are your regional planning agency, and we're always open for business.
Great.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
So, Ryan, there is a fuller, a more full detailed report that they've done, and is it in the packet?
It was in the original packet.
Ah.
And then this report.
Okay, okay.
Was added to present.
Okay, because I would like to go back and read that, and I-
I resent you the Word documents, you can take notes.
Okay, thanks.
Great. All right, so it's after 8:50, but we're going to move on to the fire station renovation design discussion. This was originated, I think, by Ryan, so why don't you?
Sure. Part two of the discussion that was had at your last meeting. So, again, we're trying to solidify the goals and to be more prescriptive, costs, cost expectations from the select board and goals for the project, so that I can properly negotiate with a designer. Or option B is to resubmit a RFQ to bring in maybe the same designers and additional designers with a stronger understanding of what the project goal is going to be. So, this was identified, and I think rightfully so, in the design selection process. It was clear to me when I started discussing this with designers, that perhaps we needed to be a little more detailed than what we were expecting, so that Carlisle gets the project that it's looking for, that fits its long-term financial plans and service delivery goals. Then, last time, you remember, you had a meeting with the fire chief mostly to discuss programming. That design is also, the slight design, what are you calling it? The chief's attempted VIZIO, which is great, and putting it in the context of previous discussions. So, all of that information is in your packet, and we're hoping at some point we are able to really define the goals and then reengage with our designers to start creating a conceptual plan.
Okay.
Make the decision.
We did have some information here from Tom that came in, and I think you all saw that. I don't know if we want to start with that, or if there's a different discussion, or, Kate, if you had an idea of how you wanted to start this?
Well, I don't. I, you know, the VIZIO plan, I just wanted, I do need to say, did not look to scale to me, because the ambulances look a whole lot bigger than the ladder trucks, so there's something off in that scale. So, I think what we need, if we're going to use that, we need to be clear to people, this was just a visual attempt to communicate the program that we're looking for, that this is, you know, they shouldn't take this as the design.
When I was, at the last meeting, I, my primary focus, I was saying, we need to start with a budget to, because I think that as a select board, we look at a lot of these different buckets of need within the town, and we have to kind of hone in on what we think is a reasonable budget. And through the discussion, I came to kind of, not change, but have a, develop that opinion that it, that it really isn't just about the budget, it's more about the services and what we want out of the fire station. And, you know, last time, I think we summarized it with four different things, with it being health and safety, so that's the, you know, kind of decontamination and the things that aren't, aren't right now up to, you know, not only OSHA, but just whatever standards. The trucks fitting in there, and there were some issues that, you know, they can't use the tanker truck in the wintertime, because it's decommissioned, because it would freeze, and that would be helpful. And then there's the gender parity issue, the fact that the fire department has changed over time. When the original building was built, it was primarily only men in the fire force, and that's not the case anymore. And so, we need to have, you know, facilities and showers and so forth that meet, you know, the needs of our current fire department. And then the last one, which was the recruitment and retention, and that's thinking about the fire department over time, and if Carlisle is going to maintain a volunteer fire force, a fire department, we need to be thinking about how we're going to get people to participate in that force. And the problem is, is that fewer and fewer of those recruits are living in town, because they can't afford to. And so, the way to attract them, we're getting a lot of interest from people outside the area, or younger people, and just lots of different demographics that want to be, participate in this, but it would be, makes sense to really think about that, and as far as how the structure itself can accommodate them. So, I think that's those four things that, you know, we should focus on going forward. But that's kind of where I am, and I don't know, you know, with, with our discussion, if we're going to, you know, if you're looking to us to articulate that further, or come up with a plan for how we move that forward, what specifically are you looking for us to?
So, if we put out a design scope with those four things, and it came in at 17 million, would that be acceptable?
And that's where I started with the budget, saying, I don't think that the town has the appetite for that, and I certainly-
Yeah, I think we need to have both. We need to have the, you know, at least a target amount, even if what we get back ends up being a little more or a little less, but we're saying, this is what we want you to, this is sort of a reasonable target number, and we're telling you that if it's much higher than that, it's not going to be helpful to us. And on the other, I mean, because I've, I've thought a lot about this, and I've had some conversations with different people since our last meeting, and I think we, we do need to be more specific in the direction we're giving to whoever we choose to do the design. And I guess one thing I would want to know is, and I think, Tom, you speak to the, a little bit to this in your memo that you, that you provided, that if the current group of designers that responded to the initial RFQ, if we don't feel, we, and really, I don't think it's the select board that can judge that, I think it's got to be the design committee, if, if, if we don't feel that that, those, that current group will be able to shift their thinking from what they originally received from us, which was much, you know, broader and more vague, and it allowed people to come in with, you know, proposals, some of which were 28 million, and some were a lot smaller, that maybe we do need to reopen that whole process and do it again, but I would, I would want to hear from the design committee, if you think the existing group that responded could be given the direction, no, go back and do this again, but here are the more, more specific, you know, goals we want you to meet, one being monetary and the other being the service that, or the elements, I guess, the functions that we want the new design to meet. I'm comfortable with that. I don't think we, as a select board, should have a conversation about what should those specific elements be. I don't think we're qualified, or it makes sense for us to be making those decisions. So, I would, I think we should, we should figure out those two broad things, and then turn it over to the town administrator, working with the design committee, and working with whoever the designer is, because that person is the one, or that firm is the one that's going to turn, turn our, you know, desire, what we're hoping, what we were looking for into a specific design, that then will tell us, well, look, even with somebody that really understands what we're looking for, it's coming in way too high, then that tells us, we do need to make some changes in what we're looking for, or we need to up our budget. And I think we, we don't know that until we get something back from a designer that is trying to do what we're asking them to do.
I think, I think what Travis just outlined was what was on the schematic, I think, he outlined it in words, what the schematic was trying to outline in, you know, pictures, is health safety, is, you know, the bi-gender, and, you know, certain number of trucks and a couple of ambulances, and, you know, places for the people to work during the day, and, you know, sleep. You did it much better, Travis. And, and I think you just add to that, and if we can do, you know, we're under, or 10 million or under. And, and if that's not possible, then we need, you know, this is the only way we can find out.
Well, if you would, I think we should, actually, we have some members of the committee here, and I think we should actually hear from them, and the fire, fire chief is here, too, is part of the committee. But if any of you wanted to, you know, talk about, if you could come forward, please, and-
I mean, I waved in with a memo.
Introduce yourself, please.
Introduce yourself.
Tom, a lot of Nathan Lane. I am absolutely convinced that the seven designers we have are up to the task, that there's not an issue of the seven that were invited into the process. I personally think there's three of them who are fully committed to 10 million or less, no problem. I think there's other four of those who are not. It is just clear in their presentations, that's all I'm judging them, what they presented. I saw presentations where one came in with a number of $6 million, which is a very innovative proposal, which I think we're, we have to look at, because it has a much better end result, potentially. One had a picture of a 20,000 square foot building, which would cost $20 million. That was on their slide, okay? It wasn't an annex. The chief has not done an architectural design, he's done a program definition, and that's what that is. And he's defined about 8,000 and 9,000 square feet, plus an existing structure of 7,000, 7 and 8, you know, 16,000, 17,000, 18,000 square feet. So, in my mind, one thing Ryan educated us on in this selection committee is, whatever criteria we put in the quote must be the criteria which are the basis of the selection. The first question we asked is, we need more criteria, but you can't have that. The RFQ is this, okay? I asked all four, all seven of those, the four committee finalists, what's the number? Are you aware of our budget number? They all said absolutely not, okay? Which, perhaps that's all true, I don't know about that, but some of them clearly, they saw the word annex in there that was in the RFQ, some of them understood that, and some did not. And one of the, one of the groups, when you asked them what an annex was, the surprise in their face about a building four inches away from the existing building, you know, was palpable. So, you need to have in there a number, and you need to have in the program definition, not architectural drawings, but the program definition, so that people can respond with, and meet those two requirements. I'm absolutely convinced it can be done for less than $10 million, perhaps a little bit, you know, a few million less than that. We learned some new information, which I think we have to account for. One of the contractors, architects, who is not, I guess, was not even supposed to do that, and this kind of an RFQ was considered unresponsive, I guess, came up with an innovative concept, to use structural steel instead of masonry, and make the entire building an integrated single fire station, fully up to code, earthquake code, for $6 million. Now, they didn't have enough program, it's clearly not going to be six, it's probably going to be eight or nine when they add back in the missing program. But that has to be, I mean, in my mind, that has to be looked at, because if you think about how we got here, 28 million dollar building we can't afford, chief came up with a very creative proposal to put an annex next to it. But one would not start with two buildings if one could get one for the same price, one integrated building. So, to me, not to look at that is, I just can't see how we can ignore that possibility. It may not be what turns out to be the end result, but if it were me, I would fund two studies. You know, we've always spent a lot of money and time on this. Let's get two studies, one for the annex, one for the structural steel integrated building, and have two designs to choose from, both of which are under $10 million. I really think it can be done. And ignoring that, when I first met with the chief, okay, I, we had a two-hour meeting with him when I joined the Public Safety Task Force, and he told me about, we needed an architect who'd work with structural steel, and I didn't understand the importance of that. But the importance of that is, to get earthquake proofing, you put in structural steel, not masonry. And that was very creative, and I, you know, those folks did not understand the program, so they didn't build a big enough building, but they had, I think, a total of like 14,000 square feet. But it needs to be what the chief wants, but I think we need to look at that.
Mr. Ballantyne.
John Ballantyne, 268 Fifth Street.
Pass over that mic, or pass it over to him.
Move the mic, thanks.
First of all, as you know, this has been going on, this discussion, for over five years, and I want to talk about where that $10 million number came from, since I was the person working with the two chiefs when we were doing the facilities budget and the master plan. And those were sort of, and it was looking at the overall budget capacity of the town, assuming that we keep the, the, more or less, the tax incidence, the relative level of taxes, stable for next 10 years. And there are a lot of assumptions there, and I'm kind of intimately familiar, as is Brian and other people, about this longer-term projection. But that's really important to look at the overall capacity of the town and the needs of other things. And within that comes the worker housing issue, which is not necessarily going to be housed at the fire station. So, you have to look at the overall picture of all the different pieces, and the $10 million was really just a kind of rough square footage cost, how much additional square feet do you need, what's the cost of doing it? And it was a really, and, and working with one of the architects who was, who was on the facilities committee, we just, we went through what were the cost of building fire stations and everything like that, and that's how we came up with that estimate. Now, it could, you can squeeze it a little bit. So, that was there, and that was, you know, two, three years ago, we said it. I think that's still reasonable in terms of budget and everything else, if you look at all the trade-offs that we have to look at. I think the point that is disappointing in the process is that we did not give clear guidance in terms of budget constraints, and none of the architects went and looked at the master plan and understood that. They could have done that. They did not do their homework. So, they came in saying, oh, we're going to build a fire station, here's what we're doing, here's the program. So, there's a lack of due diligence on their part, which, you know, they have to prepare a bunch of proposals and everything else. So, to a certain extent, the question we have is, we have an understanding of the program and our budget constraints, but that conversation with the, with the architects, and there's no question, we've got qualified architects who could do that, we haven't had that with them, and we, and maybe after talking to us, they kind of understand it, but it seems to me, and maybe Brian can go on his own, but without opening it up again, saying, and this, this becomes the legal issue, is that really the constraints that we did, we're clear about, is that we've got these budget constraints, and can we do that, and are there any additions or thoughts that you would do? To me, that would be, because right now, we're trying to sort of infer on various designs, and, you know, we had, we went through our ranking of the various firms and everything like that, but we're trying to infer which is the right one to go through, and it seems there's a fairness here, in saying, here's our budget constraint, here's our program, let's be very explicit. Is there any addendum you want to offer? Now, that may not be possible with an RFQ, and I suspect it probably isn't. So, that's the problem we have, is that, how do we, here we are midstream, and we didn't quite do our, our own guidance properly, and now here we are trying to sort of, you know, negotiate and see what works. And, you know, it's not that any of them can't do it, but are we sure that they're the right ones? And, I mean, Tom has a strong feeling about some people I've, you know-
That's why we have a committee.
There are a lot of good choices there, right.
Chief, did you have any comments you wanted to add on this?
No, I mean, so, some information I didn't have the last time I was here, so, Chief Sars, let's field drive. You know, is, the kind of thing I was looking at, what I was looking at when I drew that out was the lengths of the vehicles, though obviously they got bigger and wider and back and forth when I, when I put them on there, and they may not have been to scale, but it was to see kind of what, what we can fit in a square footage, and I didn't have a square footage for you. It was about 7,500 or 7,200 or something like that, square feet, a floor. So, you're, you're in 1,400-ish square feet, maybe a little bit more, was what I had drawn out to say, this is kind of a minimum number. I think from that, you can get a concept of, hopefully, what kind of dollar number you're, you can be a little bit closer at knowing what kind of dollar figure you're looking at, so.
14,000 is-
The two.
The two together.
No.
It's the annex.
The annex, yeah.
Alone, okay.
Right, but it's two floors, so each floor, seven plus-
So, that's not looking at the cost of potential renovation of the existing building in some way?
No, and I wouldn't expect us to do much on that, and it would mainly be just tying in, you know, you do sprinkler system, and when you go ahead and throw some sprinkles in there.
But Tom's theory is, you'd reframe the whole thing?
Well, one of the contractors said we could, with use of structural steel, they could actually make it one- could actually make it one integrated building, fully earthquake compliant. Again, at, at $6 million for less square.
Forget the price yet, but in, just in theory, that means reframing it, but not?
Correct.
But not tearing it down?
No, not tearing it down, but once, once you've shored it up and met the earthquake code, then you're free to do other things as well, because the grandfathering, the whole point of avoiding grandfathering is the earthquake.
Right, but I mean, I don't know, I don't want to get too detailed on that, but just your footing steel, and you're putting beams and stuff in, around the existing structure? I mean, existing structure is a masonry structure.
The way they actually described it was, not tearing down the current walls, but shoring them up with structural steel, which is also used for the adjacent additional structure.
Right. So you, so your position, or at least your recommendation in your note to us, is two RFQs, or, people can do one or both, they can propose to one or both of those.
And we may choose to award, award two if we get to proposals of interest. To me, the opportunity to have one integrated fire station is, you know, has to, should be explored. I mean, no one would design two separate buildings if one had the choice.
But if one had a budget, you know, and said, we want you to work within this, then they could propose anything they want.
Well, Ryan said, actually, that wasn't true. He, he, what you told me was that, that company's proposal was, was not responsive because it wasn't consistent or something?
It's not, it's not responsive. They exceeded the, they exceeded the RFQ, so.
Right, that's what I mean. So the RFQ needs to allow them to do that, right?
We didn't say, give us your conceptual design.
No, I understand, but.
You said, are you qualified to do ours?
Correct, right. So we, we want an RFQ which enables them to, puts us in a position to, if we choose to do so, to fund two studies. We made sure not to do it, we choose to pick one and do it, but.
So you can do, so you can do one RFQ that has two options?
Exactly, I think.
And they can propose to one or both of those options, right. And I think legally, to John's point, and I'm sure you were nodding your head, Ryan, you have to re-RFQ it, right? You're going to change the criteria, you can't just pick the guys who showed up and say, you're the guys, right? And, and then also to your point, you said we're midstream, but we're not midstream, we're in like yard three, right? So I, I don't think, I mean, we may be inconvenient, but the same gang of seven is likely to be the ones to propose, and it won't take them that long, because they already know a lot of this stuff, it's just, so I don't, I don't view it as too much of an impediment. I'm in support of re-RFPing it, you know, based on tighter criteria.
It's a question, though, of, do you want to do two? Do you think?
Well, that's a separate issue, but first, first is, do we want to re-RFP it? I think, you agree, right?
It sounds like we need to do that, no matter.
Kate, you're online here, I haven't heard you chime in yet.
Okay.
If there's anything you wanted to add.
You have to hear it?
I don't know.
You're hearing us?
Kate, can you hear us?
Okay, no, I, I think, I think it should be redone, and I think we need to have a budget, and, uh, I, we already have a, I think we already have a program.
Yeah. So it's just a question of the one or two, like what Tom's raising, right?
So I will.
I think you do one, I think what Ryan said is right, right?
No, one with two options, or one with one option, that's the question. I mean, is one RFP, yes?
So I will notify the respondents that we are throwing out the current bids, and it's clear to me, the number, the base number, the program requirements, and the other things we need to look at. So I can bring you another draft RFQ for public discussion and vote, and then we can put that back out to bid.
So, so, just a few numbers here. So 15,000, which we're not going to be prescriptive on the square feet, but just based on Brian's drawing, 15,000, and then the range is 500 to 1,000 is the consensus opinion of construction cost. You thought it was closer to 1,000, which is 15 million. So there's a big gap, and then two other numbers I want to throw in here. The 10 million number that we're all sort of talking about, and then, Ryan, your own, I think it's you opining that it would be closer to 12 and a half, based on, I don't know what. So what is our budgetary guideline number?
So I think, I will bring you a draft that has 10 million, and then you can discuss that, the merits of that, as you finalize the RFQ.
Okay.
As you think about it, and hopefully get input from the public and et cetera.
And, um, let's say we have that number in the RFQ. There's nothing, though, that prohibits a designer from coming back with something that they think meets our needs, that may cost more, right? I mean, it's not like, or does that, because I heard Tom say you have to judge them based on the RFQ that you provided. So, somebody that comes back with, say, a $12 million design, but it's really, does what we want it to do, and it's much more efficient or functional than, say, any of the other designs, but the other designs are closer to 10 million, are we able to select that person?
So they're, so they're not going to bring you a conceptual design with a cost attached to it. What they're going to do is analyze your RFQ and your parameters, and say, are we the right qualified designer to do, to deliver that? And when we reappoint a DSC, those can be the, the questions that are asked. Is this a project that, that you can do and can meet? Because it's really about selecting a designer that's a fit for the project you're trying to do. So hopefully, we select someone that, that would do that. You would have trust in them, that if it did exceed the minimum budget, it was for a reason, and they're going to talk to you about it. Not just say, here's the design that I have.
But even, even words of target versus limit, you know, if you say maximum, that's the maximum of target. You give a target, that they, they have an idea what their ballpark they're working with, which they didn't necessarily have.
Yeah.
Last time.
What, I think, Ryan, somebody sent this Chelmsford modular, did you guys look at that? The modular, the Chelmsford FD?
That came from one of the many people that is advising me on this. So it is, Chelmsford built a station recently, it was an addition to a current station using a modular structure, and theirs was closer to 500. This came from you, actually, right?
I have not, originally.
Okay, anyways.
Modular meaning you drop in units that are prefabbed? What does modular mean?
Yeah, prefabbed, designed. So it was closer to 500 a square foot, but it might not accommodate the entire program that we're looking for.
No, but chunks of it, perhaps, to reduce the overall. But you would expect those designers to be aware of that, right? Or is that something we should suggest?
Hopefully, the RFQ demands that they're aware of it, right? That they're interested in talking about our project, not a project.
Given what we've talked about tonight, do you have enough to go back to formulate an RFQ that we can?
That you can rip apart? Yes.
Good.
All right, good.
I think that, yeah, unless there's anybody online who had a question, or didn't, the chance.
Travis, David Flannery?
Yes.
I did, I just want to make a couple of comments, if you bear with me for a couple of minutes. So, as we think of this project, which, the first fire station in Carlisle was built in 1925, and they did expand at once, in its 60-year history. When we moved out of there in 86, we moved into the current station we're in. And when that station was constructed, with the building committee then, they did opt to put an option, and there's a, there's a dotted line on the documents, they didn't have an architect, they had a structural steel engineer build that building, if you look back in the records, for an additional bay, the length of the building, it's there. So they planned for an expansion back in 86. So here we are, 40 years later, talking about expanding the fire station. And my point of bringing this up is that we should be looking at the next 20 to 40 years of servicing the fire department needs for the town of Carlisle. Nobody knew in '26, when they built the building, of what would come in the future. No one really knew in 86, when they built the building, we're in now, of what the future would hold. The fire service has changed. We've gone into more EMS-based operations, as Brian can fill you in on that. There's a lot more things to come in the future. We also have to think about the staffing plan for the future, after all of us are retired and long gone, of what the town will do. Will they have the capability to expand again, to meet the demands of a growing community with perhaps housing? Are we going to plan for that today? I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I wouldn't be constrained so much with the budget that we have, what the town can afford right now. I understand completely the taxpayer issue and the town's issue with financing, I get that. But I'm saying in the planning and design phase, which is critical, and I've been in many of them in town buildings over the last 40 years, is we need to think about, what is the escape hatch, as we did with the Grant Building? When they were constructing the Grant Building, I suggested that they put a cement floor on the roof. And I was ridiculed for it, they thought it was a bad idea, why would we spend that money? I said, well, what are you going to do if you need classrooms in the future? And low and behold, they did put the cement floor on the roof, and low and behold, 10 years later, in 96, we built six classrooms. It saved time and it saved money for the town. So I, my point is that in the design and development phase, don't exclude anything, keep it, keep everything there, and then cut back, but also plan, or it should be in the RFP, that they look at this expansion capability for future uses. And I think it's up to the chief, with the designer and the buildings committee, to decide what could be added on in the future that we might need. I think this is in the best interest of the town. Those are my comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
He just introduced himself.
Yeah, if he, what, restated his name? He did. His chief Flannery was, former retired chief Flannery.
I'm not sure of his address.
Concord Road. Okay. I think we need to kind of wrap this discussion up, because of, we have a number of other agenda items, so I think we've got some direction. So thank you all for coming, appreciate that, and.
Now we're at the four-yard line. We did it.
But just, I mean, David, Chief Flannery makes a good point, that, I guess, just to clarify, is that, do we want to put any words in that RFP about the expansion of this expansion, or do we just, that's something for down the road? Okay.
I think we think.
Got it.
My opinion is, I mean, it's, it's.
You can overcomplicate.
It's always good to think about that, but at the same time, we have an immediate kind of need, and we're trying to address, and that does take into consideration the, you know, housing, or not even necessarily housing, the, the recruitment and retention issues.
Yeah, right, okay, fair enough, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, it is 9:23. We're going to move on to the Cranberry Bog Dam Number One Repair Discussion.
Do I sit here?
Are you Melissa?
Do I sit here? Yeah, I am.
Nice to meet you.
Great. So, Ryan, this was initiated by you, so why don't you lead us off and just tell us what we're.
Frame it for us.
All right, great. So there have been many discussions with the Conservation Commission and other relevant boards in town regarding Cranberry Bog Dam Number One. This was also a CPA article at last year's town meeting, approval for the, the design of this. Recently, a couple weeks ago, the CONSCOM passed the order of conditions that would start the repair of this project and the designs. I've been approached by a few residents, many of them are in the room, asking, they were in, in opposition to this project with the Conservation Commission, and then have asked to speak to the Select Board tonight about some remedies that they think are viable. And I believe Melissa is presenting on behalf of them, and she.
Melissa and Susan Provenzano, Sukie, who will lead off.
So they have a presentation for the board? I'd like the board's present, permission to present it, it's relevant, I've looked at it. If that's the case, then I'll turn it over.
Sure. Great. We do, just so you know, we have about 20 minutes.
Yes.
For this item. Okay, thank you.
We'll try to give you time back.
Okay.
Great.
All right, ready?
Apparently, I'll call, Sukie.
Okay.
No, she's there.
She's there.
Yep, I'm, all right, great, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for giving Melissa and me the time to express our concerns about the proposed design for a spillway for Cranberry Bog Dam Number One. I'm Susan Provenzano, I'm at 80 Mil Pond Lane. I've lived a quarter mile from the bog for my whole life, as a child. I skated on its frozen surface when the Lowell Cranberry Company flooded it, and I've ridden my horses and walked my dogs there for 50 years. I've also been co-chair of the Cranberry Bog Alternatives Committee, and I'm currently the Secretary of the Cranberry Bog Working Group.
Hi, I'm Melissa Webster of 358 Curve Street. I've lived half a mile from the bog for the last 27 years, and have walked our dogs and ridden my horses there for all of that time. Sukie and I are appearing tonight, this evening, as two individuals. So if we happen to use the words "we" or "us," I want it to be clear, it's, we're referring to Sukie and I. We're not representing some other larger group tonight.
Next slide. Thank you. There's been considerable debate over the last several months about the water flow data and the assumptions, assumptions upon which the proposed design for Cranberry Bog One Dam relies. Melissa and I believe the town should engage an experienced dam engineer to conduct a brief analysis of the systemic water flows at the bog and the spillway design. This way, this will help identify more cost-effective approaches to ensure that the current earthen dam will not be breached in a 100-year storm. The next slide. I and others have met with CONSCOM at numerous meetings to voice our concerns with the proposed spillway, and to request that CONSCOM look at alternative designs. Repeated attempts to secure a review of the spillway design and the water flow data upon which it relies have failed, and that is why Melissa and I have come before you this evening.
Next slide, please. Given the process channel, challenges that we've seen to date, Sukie and I are asking the Select Board to intervene and place warrant articles in the warrant book for the spring 2024 town meeting, to ensure that a design review is conducted before money can be spent on implementation. It is not our goal to derail or delay this important project, but rather to ensure the optimum result for the town. The first warrant article would prevent CPA funds from being dispersed prior to the completion of a water flow and design review. The second would authorize the use of CPA funds to hire an experienced dam engineer to conduct this review. Next slide, please.
Next. So the currently proposed design, pictured here, entails a large masonry spillway topped by a six-foot-wide, 25-foot-long walkway with railings and slats. It does not include the restoration of a lower cart path that was destroyed by the 2011 breach.
Next slide, please.
Next slide. Melissa and I have several concerns about the potential adverse impacts of this design. Our first concern is the potential impact on the environment. We believe the proposed spillway will permanently lower the water level in the Martin Street Pond, because the top of the proposed spillway is at a lower elevation than the natural water level of the pond. A lower water level makes the pond shallower and therefore warmer. Potential adverse environmental impacts include increased pond weed growth, increased risk of cyanobacteria blooms, and increased beaver activity as beavers attempt to counteract the lower water level. Hart Pond, which feeds both of the ponds, was closed for several weeks last summer due to cyanobacteria blooms, and these blooms are extremely toxic for people and pets. The next potential is to save money. If the review shows that the water flow to the Cranberry Bog Dam Number One from a 100-year storm is less than what has been assumed by the proposed design, a less elaborate design would save the town significant expense, and is thus potentially in the six figures.
Another concern is safety and accessibility. The proposed spillway has a 25-foot-long elevated wooden walkway that's only six feet wide. Wooden walkways become extremely slippery once mold starts to grow on them, and they're especially slick during wet or icy times. This creates risk of injury for man and beast. This creates risk of injury for man and beast. Such a narrow walkway also creates an entirely avoidable bottleneck, forcing people to wait at one end while others cross. In addition, it fails to restore the lower cart path that was, that has allowed light vehicles to reach the embankment for maintenance or in case of emergency, as well as to allow horses to pass. Finally, from an aesthetic perspective, this design disrupts the beautiful scenery. The bog is cherished for its open vistas and its natural feel. Next slide, please.
The purpose of the project was to repair the dam to withstand a hundred-year storm. A traditional grassy spillway at the right side of the dam would be more in keeping with the character of the bog and could address the adverse impacts listed on the previous slide. This area will need to be torn up anyways as the town has to remove several large trees whose roots are undermining the dam. In addition, the proposed spillway design assumes that all the water from the hundred-year storm will flow from the Elm Street Pond to the Cranberry Bog Dam Number One. The engineer who proposed the spillway has stated that the two existing culverts can handle half of this. If that is true, then two more culverts should be able to handle the rest of the water and serve the purposes of an emergency spillway. Installation would be harder, but it would address all of the concerns.
Next slide, please. Thanks. I snapped these photos during the winter of 2009 to 2010, when our Lab pup was about eight months old. And as you can see, Cranberry Bog Dam Number One was a wonderful place to meet up with fellow dog owners, cross-country ski, and ride horses. Here you can see the wide, lower earthen dam, earthen, earthen cart path that ran the entire length of the embankment. Suki and I would like to see this restored. Next slide, please. A large man-made structure will disrupt the national, the natural beauty of the bog and may not be needed, depending upon the findings of the water flow and design review. Next slide, please.
So we urge the Select Board to intervene in this process to ensure that a water flow and design review is conducted by an experienced dam engineer prior to undertaking the repairs of Cranberry Bog Dam Number One. We believe the town will benefit from the significant savings, a safer, more accessible, and aesthetically pleasing design, and to protect the bog pond environment. And we certainly welcome the Select Board's guidance as to how best to secure this review and are open to other ideas. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
There are others in the room that participated in this process. I will say the Conscom was invited to attend, and we do have a Conscom member here in the, in the crowd. The, I won't call it a crowd, the couple of people that are here. The, I don't have any comments or expertise on, on what is needed, what is, what is not. The, the other side of this is not being presented, and this was a, a process that was approved and also reviewed by the Office of Dam Safety. So the, whether or not it needs it is not really up for discussion tonight. It, I'm certain, there's opinions on both sides, but what, what they're ask is, is for the town meeting intervention, which is in the Select Board's jurisdiction. The process does belong to the Conscom.
So is there, you indicated that there's a timeframe. What is the window by which, that we have to judge whether we should intervene?
So I'm Brian, whoops.
Yeah.
Last my glasses. Brian Murphy, I'm not here for the Conscom and I'm not here, I'm chair of the Cranberry Bog Working Group, but I'm not here for that either. But I can tell you generically, because for almost 35 years I've been on Conscom, so I, I have some history. So your question was about the.
Well, it's being requested that we intervene, and we also learned that the other side, people you, you know, are affiliated with, are not here to represent the other arguments, which would be needed, I think. Response would be needed. So I'm questioning first, what's our timeframe? Because we would have to wait till a subsequent meeting. I don't know why they declined. Did they not have a timer? Or they had no interest? I don't know why the Conscom did.
David?
Yes.
David, we're not here tonight to litigate, to re-ligate the dam because even if we did have the other side, we are not, we don't have the expertise to make that decision. That's why we have a Conscom. You know, we would have to defer to them. The decision we're here to make tonight is, do we need to require these people to gather, what is it, 100 or 150?
100.
100 signatures in order to put a warrant on the, a citizen's petition on the warrant? Should we help them by possibly extending the deadline for gathering those signatures? Because I think, what is our current deadline, Ryan?
February 13th.
February 13th. But that's an artificial deadline because our, you know, that's, we made that up and we, you know, is, that deadline is there in order to kind of not let new citizen petitions come up, you know, pop up at the end. Or should we help them by just saying, by putting the warrant, an article on the warrant for them? So I think that's, we're, we're talking about things that we have control over and that we have expertise about, not anything the Conscom has expertise about.
Could, could we just put slide three back up, please?
Do we have this slide presentation?
We don't.
Okay.
I emailed it to.
We emailed it.
Oh, okay.
So it just, generically, in response to your question of deadlines, not about the Select Board, in terms of the Conscom, the abutters, the, the decision to accept the NOI, which was delayed for 90 days based on a peer review, which didn't occur, is, was made on, on January 11th. So whatever 10 business days, and we had Martin Luther King Day in between, so add one, whatever the time period is between the 11th and that date, is how long the, either abutters or a ten citizen appeal can be made to the DEP and Superior Court. And in this case, the Conscom had agreed in May to have a peer review, which is how one deals with issues that, you know, we're a bunch of volunteers. We're, we're not a bunch of engineering experts. So often you could appear before a Conscom and they'd say, you know, we need a peer review. It's just not uncommon. What's uncommon is that in this case, the applicant is also the Conscom. So there's a little bit of conflict of interest of how do you deal with that? And being that they agreed in, in May to have a peer review, dropping one in, in January is certainly alarming to people because, you know, the fox is guarding the hen house. It's just, it's just not right.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, John.
Would you like?
I'm sorry.
John Ballantyne, 268 Fifth Street, and also an abutter to the Cranberry Bog and a member of the Carl, um, the Cranberry Bog Alternatives Committee before, as an abutter I could no longer be it. So I have attended almost all of these meetings for the past three years, and unfortunately, as you can see, and if you read the mosquito, it's a process that hasn't worked very well. And we have tried very hard to find a compromise and to suggest other ways of doing it, as, as Brian mentioned, a, a peer review or, or an evaluation of the, of the dam and water flows. And essentially, we're at a point where they said no, and that there was not going to be a compromise. And that's unfortunate. And as, you know, as you were talking about, how do you get people in common interest to come together? And that has not worked. And we are left, and me as an abutter and Chris Finney are drafting an appeal to DEP to reconsider what's going on and to look at the issues, which is not an option we choose, but, but basically, there isn't, there's probably, there may be a better design that costs less. That's really the bottom line, and that will be aesthetically pleasing. But, you know, people get stuck in their ways. And that's where we are. So that's, and we don't want to be here, but that's, you know, this is how we are.
And just, we don't have all evening to, to discuss this, but just to, I, I've listened in on many of these discussions with the Conservation Commission at the, at their meetings, not the discussion, but the meetings. And my opinion is, is that this has now become, you know, an issue that, that needs, it's a political issue with, as you point out, between two sides, the, the Conscom and then a group who is not satisfied with that decision. In my opinion, I don't think that the Select Board should get involved in trying to make that decision of what, but they're asking, can we get to go to the town meeting and be on the warrant? And they want an extension to, to do that for the time period. My opinion is it's reasonable, given that the, the timing didn't really quite work out and that it's a known thing. It's not like they're coming at us the last day of February 15th saying, we want to do this. So to get that, it seems reasonable to me, but I would still think that if a citizen's petition, they're going to need 100 signatures. I don't think the Select Board should interject here and say.
So I, I have to say, I'm not, I'm not, you know, versed like you are and John is, but I don't agree with Kate that we're not weighing in on whether there should or shouldn't be a spillway and all that stuff. That clearly is not our expertise.
Right.
What I'm hearing, though, what I'm hearing is that there was, in their mind, and we don't have the other side, an arbitrary, there was a promise to do a peer review that was pulled out from under. That is a process issue that we're certainly qualified to look at. And why was it promised and then taken away with little recourse? We were imposing on this group a burden of getting those signatures through a process that maybe wasn't followed. That concerns me as, doesn't the Conscom report up to us? Are they, they're not an independent body, right?
Yes, they do report to.
Well, there you go. I mean, there's a process issue that we need to hear.
But they are not, they do not answer to you.
They don't answer to, but there are processes that we try to, we try to have processes in town that are fair and thoughtful. There's a reason, I'm sure, why they decided not to do peer review, but it does impose a burden on this group to go run around to get signatures if, in fact, that was improperly done. That is of concern to me.
That's, David, that's only one alternative. We could just agree, even though, we don't have to agree to support the article, but we could certainly agree to put the article on without the signatures.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Right. But, but that is taking a position in many, in my view, based on, you know, you're saying, gosh, I haven't even listened to the Conscom and their arguments yet, and I'm taking a position to put this.
So let Conscom come in. I started down that path, and Kate said, don't do that. But why wouldn't, why not have them in?
My opinion is that while there may be some concerns about process, I don't think we as a Select Board want to reopen the, the discussion, the arguments about whether or not the current plan for the dam is a good one or not. I, I think we will find ourselves, it'll, it'll be very difficult to determine, this group, determine what's, what's appropriate or not. So, and I think, Travis, I agree with you that simply agreeing as a Select Board to put a, an article on the warrant, even if we don't take a position on it, it will appear that we are taking a position, the way that, the way things work in town. And so I, I would rather we, while I understand it means there's more work for you all to do to get the signatures for, for a citizen's petition to put this on the warrant, I think it's, I think then, I think it's more appropriate, you know? And if, if it means we should extend the deadline for collecting signatures, there's no reason we couldn't do that, right? There's no legal reason we couldn't do that to allow the group to meet the requirements of a citizen's petition. Is that right?
I did speak with the town clerk and looked up the various laws. So this, this is a gray area. You set the deadline for administrative purposes. You could move the warrant article and petition deadline to the 27th to invite a further conversation and talk about it. The point of tonight was just to expose you to it so that you could make this decision because it does have to be made in the next month or so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I kind of think what you had just said. I think, you know, I don't want to wade into this too deeply because I think we will get bogged down in that, and I just don't think that that's a good use of, we have a lot to consider with budgets and everything else. And I think it's their right, it's every citizen's right. If you want to go and, you know, put a petition together and go before the town, go for it. I mean, that's, that's great. That's your right and you should do that. I don't think that, in my opinion is, I don't think the Select Board should kind of have a, an opinion on that. You should just do it. But I, my only opinion is I'd be willing to give you more time because I think that's a reasonable, given if there were deadlines and you were waiting on this opinion from the Conscom and then, you know, that delayed that, that seems like a reasonable way to give an extension, a reasonable thing to give an extension. So that's what I think. Kate, do you have anything else to add?
No, I'm in total agreement. I, that, it falls within those options that I outlined to start, and I, I think it's a really good compromise. And I advise the, you know, people that are interested in that to go get up, go get your forms tomorrow from the clerk, start collecting.
What would our deadline be then?
Well.
February 20.
Well, we have to decide, do we want to.
It's currently, what is the current deadline? February?
13th.
13.
Why don't you start collecting, see where, how you get, and if you get close to, well, the next, our next meeting, if you really, you know, finding your.
It's the 27th, right?
Yeah, give them to.
There's no reason we couldn't allow through to the 20. If we choose to do that, we could make it the 27th.
Right. Their slide indicated they had 60 people supporting this, so it would think if that was 60 and they could come up with 40 more, they'd be pretty much.
Yes, in the, in the history, on slide three, Conscom voted in May to do a total peer review. Then in October, then in September, surprisingly voted to close the NOI. So we did mount a petition effort with more than 50 names in 48 hours. We submitted that to Ryan, to the, to the town and to Conscom. And subsequently to that, receiving that petition, Conscom voted again to do a peer review or a design review. And then to our surprise, in January, they overturned that after working for a few months on an RFP that was never completed. The text of the RFP was never completed, it was never issued, and they abandoned all of that in January. So it's been months of, we thought were sincere commitments, and so we do have some practice getting names on a petition. Thank you for the deadline extension.
I mean, from your standpoint, would that be, would that, is that acceptable to you to have a February 27th?
February 27th deadline would be great. Yes, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
That's what's before us to decide.
I have no issue with that. Kate, you also with that? Do we need to vote, Ryan, to do that? All right. So does one of.
Suki, are you in agreement? There's two of us.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, it's certainly an acceptable option and definitely would love to have the extra time since I'm in South Carolina.
That's right.
Okay.
I'm going to be out of town for a few.
My question for the board is if, when we make this motion, is this extension of deadline for this group or is it for all citizen petitions?
I would think it would have to be for everyone.
Yeah.
Because if we're making a rule, it's the same with this group, you know? It doesn't matter who it is, you know? We're, we're making decisions kind of independent of whatever position any group holds.
So how about, I'll make a motion then that we approve the extension of the deadline for the collection of signatures for a citizen's petition to go on the spring town meeting to Tuesday, February 27th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Lo, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye. So it will be to the 27th.
Thank you. And if, if there is advice that the Select Board would like to give us in terms of how to word warrant articles to affect the, the result that we are looking for, which is getting a design review before money is dispersed on repairs, we're, our ears are open and so are our minds.
And is that, just for, just to understand what happened in the past, the recent citizen's petition around the building code, the stretch code, was there support provided by the town on the, on the language of the warrant?
Yes.
Yeah, so we could do the same thing.
Should we do that for everyone?
Well, I'm just, I'm saying we've done it for one, unless we just make a decision to not do that in the future, I think we should stick with what we started.
Okay. I just want to be consistent and that's not relative to this group, but it's, but any petition, any citizen petitioner will get town support, town help in writing their thing is what you're saying.
It's best practice.
Why have a poorly written, why ignore them and have a poorly written?
I'm just asking. I don't know. I have any, I'm just asking. I want to be consistent.
Geez, Travis.
Good question.
Gosh.
And I guess the other understanding is, if this petition goes forward, there'll be time and money spent by private individuals to make this happen, because we'll probably have to do some preliminary dam review ourselves and gathering of money. But that's just, that's our choice. But because the, because there was a decision not to do that and do it on town expense, now it's going to be individual volunteer expense, which is unfortunate, and that's, that's where we are. And so we didn't want to be here. Right.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're moving right along. We are, well, the good news is, we got a little bit of the TA report done, so we've made up some time there. Thank you, Ryan. So we'll go on to the municipal flag policy and have a discussion and a vote on that. Ryan, anything you wanted to provide?
So this draft is the edited from your last discussion, so this is a final review.
I read through it, and it looks fine to me.
I liked it. My one comment is that the library thought that they had their own flag policy. Have that been, has anybody checked in with them?
They did say that they retain the authority over their flagpole, but they would match your policy.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I wanted to actually open it up. I don't know if there's anyone online, but if you have a question or a comment, I'd take, I think this is reasonable for public input on a policy change. Anyone? All right. Well, seeing none.
You outlasted them.
I move that the select board accept the municipal flag policy as presented in this evening's packet.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Odell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye. Passes four, nothing.
Look at that, Brian. We did one conversation in the last meeting, made a few changes, comes back, and we've signed off on it.
Did it.
Yeah.
We won.
That's the plan.
It's a good habit to get into, right?
Great habit.
All right.
You need public input, too, on those things.
All right. Continue with my report. So the, in your packet, in my report, there is a example IMA and a cost chart for a shared position, a substance, shared substance abuse coordinator position between us and five other towns. So the cost to Carlisle for this shared position would be about 5% of the agreement, or $7,000. And this is well within the annual opioid settlement revenues that are coming in that, that we've talked about at town meeting and dedicated to this purpose. So this is enough to allow others to use this funding while still adding this good resource to the town. So this is a resource that was discussed at resident services meeting, and town staff believes this would be good and something used. And the Board of Health is very supportive and has done a great job organizing this. So this isn't up for vote. I just wanted to bring it to you for your attention and comment, looking through the IMA. If the board does want to put this on an agenda soon, and we will try to do that and approve this concept, then we can start negotiating and finalize, finalize this agreement. None of the towns are ready for it to be finalized. This is probably an FY25 thing, but it'll come quick, as everything does.
Okay.
Two great Rotary sign notifications. I have authorized the following two Rotary signs. One for the garden club, they're giving away seeds, which is awesome. I didn't know they did that. And then the chorus, Carlisle Community Chorus is looking to put a sign out on the Rotary for their rehearsals. And I will show you what that looks like. Because some people send pictures. Boom. So both of those have been approved. The information is in your, is in your packet. If you have any issues with that, please let me know, and we will rescind the approval. The last one came from Barney, that's why she's left.
She's on the course.
The dates will be changed to reflect the current--
Be updated.
They'll be updated, but yeah, that's it.
All right. So again, that's the garden club and the chorus.
Before you go on, Ryan, I just want to go back, I'm sorry, but I didn't have a chance to ask this, on the dog park, what is the, you said there was a reduced dog park design, and I presume there's a reduced cost?
We believe that the reduced design would reduce the cost.
We don't know that yet.
Correct.
Okay.
But it was--
That's the hope.
That's the hope. It was designed to meet what the grant would be in hopes of getting the project done.
Yeah, okay.
It's going to be a lot of effort to get it done in the timeframe that it's required, so the project is perilous at this point.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just ask, what sort of, you know, I would imagine that there's fewer impacts because of a smaller design, so you think there's, you know, is there any chance of being snags, permitting snags going forward?
You never, I don't believe so. I share your opinion, but it does take time. It does have to go through site review and other processes again.
Okay.
The financial policies and buy recycled policy update will show up again at the next meeting. Just notifying you, I'll send those out again for comment. So this one is, to bring this to the board's attention, the COHS director requested that the select board support an intergenerational pride event scheduled for May 31st, 2024, at 3:00 PM. They are joined by the Public Library and the First Religious Society in this event. It seeks approval for a banner over school street, rainbow lights strung on the town common tree, and small pride flags placed in the ground around the Rotary. While I very much support this event, and so does my office and our departments, this would require select board approval. It does exceed my authority to approve these things. The exact request isn't in yet. I do want you to be notified that it is coming.
Why does it exceed your approval?
I can't put things in the ground in the Rotary or approve the sign, and it is something that we just discussed with policy, so we're bringing it to you.
Good.
The cemetery task force and the traffic and pedestrian safety committee that were discussed, I have put potential charges in here for you to review, not to approve tonight. But if you have any comments on these, this is the staff recommendation for what these would look like. So the cemetery task force would look at Green Cemetery and other burying grounds for a variety of things, policy, staffing, infrastructure needs, software, how to maintain the character, and the future directions and expansions. And then I took a swing at the traffic and pedestrian safety committee, recommending to change the name to Safety Committee. This is a recommendation from David, actually, to have some committee that's in charge of reviewing safety in town, so whether it's OSHA compliance or other issues, in addition to traffic and safety. So just--
David?
Odell.
Oh, this David, okay.
You periously climbed the ladder on top of the wastewater treatment plant, and we both commented that we need some safety.
Okay.
On that, I just have a quick comment on signs. Does that committee will deal with signs? So if you get a resident who says, I'd like to have a sign on such and such street, that's the committee it'll go to?
Correct.
And I have a, just a small, maybe semantic suggestion, wording suggestion. I think calling it just the Safety Committee is going to confuse people with public safety, where, you know, right now, we talk about public safety facilities, and it's police and fire and ambulance. And I think calling this the Safety Committee just, it doesn't tell you what they actually do that's different from public safety. And also, if I read this correctly, there's not, there's, is there, was there much in here about walking, and do you include anything in here about pathways and--
It says it here. I mean, we, I've only, it's the first time, you know, this packet's the first time I'm seeing the draft, but I think to give Ryan guidance, we should look at the draft and make some changes. I agree with you that there's confusion, so I'm, I'm glad that, you know, Ryan brought it up. I believe that we have a gap, right, generally speaking? So the public safety's, you know, fire, the big things, right? But any organization looks at, you know, in the corporate world, it's generally called EH&amp;S or some version of that, right? Environmental health and safety, which is all those things, right? It's, you're spilling motor oil in the transfer station, you know, I mean, you know, and we don't want to make more bureaucracy, but you should be aware of things. We should, and that ladder and the, you know, wastewater treatment's one of them. Like, town and place should not be climbing that ladder, right?
Maybe we call it Community Safety Committee or something. I don't know. I'm just saying, I think it would be helpful to have it--
So this is supposed to be a subcommittee of yours? So most of these requests come to either me or you, and we would push these, too. So whatever name it is. I very much doubt that a resident would go directly to the subcommittee. So the name--
You said subcommittee, as opposed to a standing committee?
It would be a--
Subcommittee of what?
Subcommittee of the select board. So you get--
Most of these committees appointing a committee of the select board?
A committee of the, a committee of the--
It could be a committee.
I guess by the extension, they're subcommittees, because we're the--
I'm just asking, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I don't--
So the committees typically have, typically have their own individual power or charge. This is you to get a recommendation from. So a lot of the times, someone will come and say, I want the select board to put a sign here. Well, then this committee would deliberate that, do the legwork, and then bring a recommendation to the, to the board.
Right.
And we get a lot more than people think.
Okay, I see.
But are those signs? Well, I think Barney had a good point about safety and the semantic, the name of it. Like, are there more than--
We should, yeah, we should fix that.
Signs, walking paths, roads.
Community health and safety.
Sure, yeah, that sounds good.
We can come back to this.
Let's come back to that. It's getting late. We actually, we're doing fine, but I wanted to get done by 10, so keep going, Ryan.
I want to go to bed.
All right. Two, two quick staff recommendations. So a lot of recognition of the DPW lately, but I got a chance to drive with Jim on the roads. He did not let me drive, which was disappointing, but he was--
I would call that smart, not a move.
That was community health and safety at work.
He, he obviously has a lot of expertise. I would love to work for him. I'm sure his, his staff feels the same way. He cares about the town, he has a lot of experience, and he's helping a lot of our newer employees understand the roads, and he showed me how to do things, and I always wondered how they did intersections. So I just wanted to recognize that. Joe Piterino, also one of our dedicated driver laborers, fulfilled his commitment to receive the licensing necessary to operate heavy equipment, so he'll be doing that. In terms of upcoming dates of interest, the main thing for you is, I, I have been ordered to go to the final phase of the Sergeant Major's Academy from March 15th to March 29th, so that'll be 14 days. So I will have to appoint someone being at Fort Bliss, Texas, as a temporary town administrator.
February 23rd, I don't think is the date, either, correct date?
Where the next, right, it's 27.
Should be 27th, yep.
Yeah.
Is, and Aubrey's still on leave during that period you're in Texas, correct?
She is, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And--
And just quickly, the February 5th Public Police Department renovation Q and A, is that being organized and sort of chaired by the police department, by you, by--
And invite the select board to, so the, the idea is, the designer will also be there, so there'll be a room for Q and A, and that'll be videotaped. Then anybody wants a tour of the facility will get it from the police office.
Is this all virtual, or it's real?
It's in person.
The tour would be actual.
At the police station.
So you can either tour the building, participate in the Q and A, or both. And the Q and A will just be a long, open session where people can come and ask questions and see the design. So try to make it as interactive as possible.
Yeah.
And it'll be in a tiny conference room, and people will see why we want to make that conference room bigger.
Right, right, okay. And this is going to be, you don't give a time, so is this, what's the period of time that this runs that day?
I believe we're looking at five to eight.
In the evening, okay.
So just going through the warrant articles real quick, the eight normal articles are consent agenda articles. For financial articles, things of note are whether or not there'll be an MFC article in addition to the capital equipment article. The finance committee's been discussing that. Whether or not to rescind all the work we did on the opioid article, which is, might be annoying but necessary. And then this, as you heard earlier, the CPS has requested an article for adding a special education stabilization fund. Some more follow on that. For department and committee articles, the high school amenities building is going to be a big topic. The planning board is asking for GIS support for, for three years of implementation. The CONSCOM bog house repairs, that's actually going to be under CPA.
So this is the study, is this Article 24 down there below? Or is this something different? That's, that's the feasibility study? They're not actually planning, they're not asking for--
19 goes away, right?
They're not asking for money to actually do repairs now?
I'm sorry, this is dynamic document, so I'm going to show you the one I'm looking at.
Okay.
So you have, for department and committee, the amenities building, planning board GIS, the bog water management plan from the Conservation Commission, Center Park is looking for a shed, and the police station renovation, which is obviously going to be a very big article.
Oh, so the bog water management plan--
That's what we just talked--
No, that's not the dam. That, this, what is the bog water management plan?
So that is assessing water levels within the bog on all--
Hydrology study?
Unfortunately, there's many dams, not just dam number one.
Yeah, okay.
Are these, aren't in set order, right?
No.
We will ultimately, because I think the police station, we prioritize that, I would think it should be earlier, but I don't know. That's my opinion, but maybe we'll talk about that another time.
Okay.
I don't want people to stay to hear everything else.
CPA articles, the bog house feasibility study, this is to look at potential affordable housing options in the bog house. The Benfield ADA door is to fix that door to make it ADA accessible, Affordable Housing Initiative, rent assistance within the town, the Fisk Street dike, starting that repair process, and then the Recreation Commission is looking to add a splash pad. Those are all CPRs. Those haven't been approved, and they might not be final, but that's, that's a list in front of the CPA right now.
And we've also gotten the request from the celebrations committee for the 250th at, for $20,000.
They want that for the 25, but I guess they do, yeah.
Yeah.
So long list, more to follow.
Two day, looks like a two-day town meeting.
And that is my report.
We have the cemetery deeds, then.
Yes.
Can we do those?
Sorry, what follows right after this, these green grass?
That was the opioid thing about sharing.
Oh, 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 okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And I don't, we're not going to talk about that now, right?
We did.
We did. He went through in his report.
Seven K for us.
Okay, got it.
Are we going to put it for us to vote next time?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Comment on that for you.
And then I've got the next agenda.
Do we have deed motions here? I don't see any deed motions.
I saw it in there, I thought, and I'm sorry, I don't have it.
I don't see any deed motions.
Cemetery deeds?
Cemetery, maybe it was in the--
I've got it, I'll read it.
Thank you.
I moved to transfer land in the public burial ground at Green Cemetery described as follows, deed 815, lot deed 375, graves one and two, to Susan Richardson at 547 Westford Street, Unit A.
Second.
It was nice to have a name that was not hard to pronounce.
Is that the only one?
Yep.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Odell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Just one, I'm looking at the agenda for the next meeting. We need to add the, God, my mind's blanking. The charge for the celebrations committee, right? We're trying to, are we, did we say we were going to do that at the next meeting or no?
Probably should, yeah, I think so. Yes.
But we'd get back to.
But you've got, you've got like 20 minutes of dog hearing and hopefully you won't.
That'll go away, you moved it to the 27th.
Yeah.
All right. The big thing is going to be reviewing that warrant. Well, it would have been final, and it still will be. So reviewing that and draft two with the finance committee will be about an hour.
Right. So our plan is still to finalize the warrant that night, close the warrant, sorry, close the warrant, which you've got 8:20 to 9 o'clock, but you're saying we need at least an hour. So you'll make that adjustment.
Isn't that the job of the chairman?
Yeah, I've just, well, I'm just pointing it out then, because you would have done that in the past, come on.
I relinquished that.
Anyway.
That was our job, but it's not our job anymore.
Any more? All right. Moving on, I think we're to the end if we want to have any community input.
Minutes.
Oh, the minutes, thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't see that on, oh, yeah, it is. All right.
I can put the motion out there. Move to approve the January 9th, 2024 select board meeting minutes as presented or amended, pending inclusion of the ARPA handout presented at the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
I did submit three minor typos to Gretchen. They're very minor, I don't think they're worth talking about.
We will make them.
Kate, anything out on your end?
I, I also submitted some, but I think she put those in the second updated packet, so I don't, depending upon, and we're going to have to talk about packets and how they get, because obviously if you guys only opened the second packet and didn't have, for instance, the meeting, the report of the MABC, which was in the first packet, which I read then, you know, it's, we got to, we got to get some better way of updating our packets for